We'll call this meeting to order at 6:35. Welcome, everyone. We're going to start with agenda review and adjustments. I'd like to put one thing on there, which is a welcome because we have a lot of different welcoming's happening tonight. Other than that, does any other board member have any agenda review or adjustments?
I'm all set.
Okay. Alex. Okay. So, first off, I would like to welcome and introduce our two newest members of the school board. Tula and Liz, welcome, welcome to us. We're all doing this together to serve the community. So happy to have you with us. And thank you for your willingness to serve. This is exciting for us. So, thank you. And I also want to welcome everyone who's on the call to this is our budget season, and this is a special meeting to kick off budget season. This is the place and these are the moments that we are here to to engage intentionally and deliberately to be stewards of the Winuski residents' tax dollars. The board acts as a bridge between the needs of the organization and the needs of the Winuski students. And we govern, well, our organization, Winuski Schools, exists to produce worthwhile human results. And I just want to remind ourselves of what the promises by Winuski Schools to our community. Is it all students will graduate college and career ready at a cost supported by the majority of the Winuski community? Students will lead healthy, productive, and successful lives and be engaged in their local and global communities. The board governs by this statement, and it was crafted with input from our community. So, as we all listen to the presentations from the Winuski Schools leadership team, we need to listen for alignment between the operation of the organization to fulfill these promises for what our organization exists to do.
Tori, sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize, but could I interrupt for just a second?
Of course.
Tool is here to interpret for some of the Nepali-speaking community members. And I think there's at least one in the attendees right now. And I know Tool might be trying to get others on, so I just wanted to take a minute and check in with him to see if he's ready to start interpreting.
Great.
Tool, are you ready to start interpreting? Are you working with parents? Can you unmute yourself?
Aksinavandi. A lot of phone calls and messages coming. The link is not working, so I'm just responding them.
Okay. So, should we get started? Go ahead and get started, and hopefully people can get on in a few minutes.
Cool. Amisha, Amisha is here. Amisha commented on the Q and A and said, Amisha is here.
Amisha, one of them. Okay, there.
So, Tool, we have, it looks like Amisha, we have, let's see, Garang Behim and Durga Dakal. Sorry for not pronouncing that very well.
Durga Dhakal and Amisha is the same person.
Okay. So, I apologize for the technical errors, but if we'd like to start with that portion, and sorry, Kirsten, if you wanted to kind of finish up that explanation, that...
I'm sorry, Emily, just about what portion is going to be interpreted tonight? Is that what you meant?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. I know we got interrupted here trying to figure out the technical snafus, but I think we're, it looks like we're, it's working now.
Great. Okay. So, hi, everyone. I'm Kirsten Colgard. I'm the Director of the English Language Learning Programs for the Winuski School District. It's nice to meet the new board members. And tonight, last year during the budget season, we had excellent parent participation from a wide variety of our community members. And tonight, I know Tool is one of our homeschool liaisons, Tool Narola, he's going to be interpreting for the Bhutanese Nepali community. And as always with COVID, there are technical challenges. So, we're trying to get parents on right now for the public comment portion of the of the meeting, so that parents can share out their comments around the budget. And then Tool will be interpreting them as needed for the board.
I know still like there are a lot of parents waiting, so they actually send the link, but still it's like it's not working, but I think that's fine.
Do you want us to go ahead and finish? The next thing that I was going to do was introduce the Budget Buddies. And then we're going to move into public comments. Does that work?
Is that the question you asked me?
I just want to introduce the Budget Buddies who are with us here tonight as community members to sit with us. So, I would just do that, and then we'll move into public comments for for, you know, anybody else on the call that wants to make comments to the board about the budget. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, and let me know if you want me to pause for interpretation, Tool. So, one way that we intentionally involve community in our budget process is to invite Budget Buddies and to seek them and ask them to come and be a part of the conversation. We have four buddies with us tonight. We have Jean Silva, Alison Burlock, Sheldon Goodwin, potentially, and Steven and Rebecca. And I want to thank you all for your service for the community. These Winuski citizens are here to sit with us and listen and question with the board to provide a community lens to the budget process at each of these budget meetings that we'll be having.
Why they do it? While it's your meeting, as a just the budget call again, meeting on my side, this is like a society, Rosie. Yeah, I'm not sure there is a better share on this one. Our name is no bueno. Alex, the name is no bueno, that he Liz, Alicia, the name is no bueno. Or the very general name, we have been about, yeah. You may have phone, but it was the right side, I know, because I know the they were, as you have, I could buy a car, my son, no, I shouldn't. Okay.
Okay. And to set this up, we will come back week by week. We will get new information from the state, from revenues and tax rates. And you'll hear us keep using the phrase, "We'll sharpen our pencils," as we move through the next five, four to five weeks of budget meetings.
Just say, I was as a budget, go business, carry by talk, my but it could like it, or it that even if you need ski, go, a bass in the, or go, bass in the room, it's a war, go text. Open air, fair, and so this man. Yo. I will, while it was there, but text, but I don't want to answer it, man.
So, now we'll move to public comments. And this is the time for Winuski residents to share their thoughts with the board. Since there are no action items tonight, tonight is the only time that Winuski residents will be able to share their thinking with us other than the Budget Buddies who have a different role here.
And that is not why I see budget call like here, but I'm a one who has a vote, come on, share, I know. While they have no better, go on, it's a, I mean, I love my, I think, and that's the same, didn't watch. You some, I imagine, I'm a your budget, oh, like, I'm a little, okay. So, that's all I have a question, I'm a little, so, no, so, Kinsa. I mean, Joey, Kobe, when he buy, when he has my, I'm like, no, it's a, when I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, so, Kinsa, yes, I'm a.
No, no, me shakshin, no, no, me shakshin, per jana kam hola, ya ko parishtis thane sah. Andi, edi bela bhai ke khanna ma apni, ke pailo prashna dekhi, jasai, wa aijana konadia jile shodh nuvut, tu prashnala idele, waale number raheira ek ek gar answer din uncha, ki samushtama ektho banare chhod din uncha, yujie ke uncha? Tu shod din.
Oh, uncha. So, if, I mean, for the public comments and questions for next week, are you going to give them answers like, in a number wise, like, in a series or in a sequence, or do you give random answer for that, or like, do you only select the questions which is really very needed? Or the question which is really very essential?
Did Tori fall off? Looks like she's gone. Tool, let me try from a bit of a different perspective. The process we used last year, and it's the same process we use every year, we have to gather up from the administrative team what they need in the new budget. And tonight, tonight, what they're, tonight, what they're looking to do is, give us the outline of what it is we need to consider in the new budget. Right at this point, as far as the transportation goes, because it was in the budget last year, it's pretty likely in the budget this year. It's just a function of, you know, how much will be and how, how long it'll be, but that's not something we can answer right now. Because we haven't even gotten the view of what it is that we're even looking at for an overall budget. So we've got to put all of this together first, understand how all of the new requests fit, and then we can have these deeper discussions on individual parts. So, the answers tonight are tough because we haven't even seen the high level of what it is we are considering. And I think that'll be obvious as we get going into more detail tonight on what are the other needs.
Thank you, Mike, for filling in. I don't know what happened.
Yep, Tool, you want to take a second? There's a couple of questions that may be answered by this, I hope.
So what I'm wondering, and Mike, I don't know if I heard, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't, what I'm wondering is, because my assumption is that most of these questions are about transportation, and Mike, you may have spoken to this, is the understanding that we're going to go through a presentation of the budget, and then we're going to continue getting more information. So I don't want to be disrespectful in the expectations that this was going to be a conversation based on all the questions. So, and Mike, based on what I did not hear you say, I just want to make sure we're moving forward with clarity about what the public comment section is for and what's about to happen after this, which is presenting information. Mike, are we in line with what you, you were saying? Disappeared, okay.
Yep, pretty much.
So, Tool.
Yeah, Tool, Tool hasn't, Tool hasn't translated at least the higher level. I don't know if that would be helpful, Tool.
It might, let me just ask one question that might be transferred. Would it make the most sense to have questions be posed and get them for the next meeting so that we can, we can respond? And potentially, some of those questions will be answered through the presentation?
Uh, yeah, aile, Mike, Tori, dojana leni, waale, dere kura ar bolno bhai na? Par ab mero buzai maasi, Mike lekhi banu bhaasa bandaasi, aaj ko khasmaji waarko present, yo budget presentation ko laghi chai. Kati kura aru tabay bharasi, yo khasai jee shudha prasalla liyera jee, budget presentation waale gurnu parne ho, hai na? Yo khasmaji, tabay bharasi, sujha prasalla liyene matre ho, tar amla jia prashna shodh na thali, ra prashna ko jawab na aak, jast maani buze, hai na? Waale jaba, amla ke ke chai, aksa, amla ke je thapnu parne ho, ke gurnu parne yo budget ko laghi. Waale, kati paya, presentation aru banai shapnu bhaasa, koshari kharsa gurne, bhanne kura aru, ni karis shapnu bhaasa. Ra amli bharasi, ab ke kura aru, aje ke kura aru, aunshan ki, amli tistdaai, ab jaste purparar pani, boss ko kura aru thape, yo kura aru paila thena, hai na? Ani boss ko gura thapinda khere jee, ani boss ko laghi budget chhutaiyo. Tei bhaara, waale bheni, ab iswali feri, amla Ramchandra jile bheni, boss ke laghi kura gurnu bo. Iswali bheni boss painsa, bheni, amla usse mason padhaa gatiyon, tar a drive bhanavare bheni ho, bhanne kura aru bhai, hai na? Atei garaj, wa, Tori le bheni, ab budget presentation ko laghi ne, sujha prasalla liyera jee, amla agadi borni, bhanne jastu kura aya buzin sah. Okay. Kastu underesha, bheni answer. Yo, mechin teti effective dekhiye na, ki, ki na banda, hari, tu kutu manis leche, prashna ko utar paye na, bheni, ho, waale bhanne ko, amli bada suja pliun cha, sala suja pliun cha, tu bare ma waale, gayre rupma chalfal gurnu cha, ra arka hafta bhanu cha, ni. Waale, waale bheni, tar amla prashna e urde, man main prashna aavda, jab saman ke answere paye na, bheni, ke tha? Ani ab yo, ab khasen, number one, abo, topic ne budget bhanne, viti ne, amla jee, school ko boss nani, alet, suvida paye, sabhi abhi babakar lai, ramro unni, tu, ki na ki, koi ahi babak, ek jana kam gurne uncha, ai, padi jana ko kiesa, garmao, dukh bimaasa. Ra, tech ke samay, ma jee, boss ahiyo bheni, jee, abhi babakle, kune tension ninnu parthe na, jaste ek sin ko laghi, mo bhen ko morning duty kam gurno, zada ichore, mani do, tar boss auncha, saare saath baji auncha, mo jaanu parsha saath baji, estha halko saathi bhai ru, amla samas ma deerecham. Waale time address gurnu shaknu baku sahna, karan, abo kampani gurnu paru, hanu pani paru, balba cha, padhun pani paru, ani, onir bhai ra. You chee safi, banda, number one, prashna, you chee, tomii, jatil, prashna. Abo budget, school bus, ahiyo bheni, budget bada jee, school bus, rang gurnu shakhi bheni, jee, ki, rani mansele, jusle ek bakti, morning duty kam gurisa, usle ramro sangalai, school lai, bacha padhun shakcha. Tar, school ko time table, usko kam ko time table, milena bacha apnae, padhun shakina, kam apni ampar ba, bheni, kaar bata, bhanne jastu pani, mile buze. Arku, arku kura, ab amla ke shola dinu, ke sujha dinu? Ke, mother, ke shola, sujha dinu, jastu to kei laage na? Tei bheni, overall, heri, hari, samas ba, amla community ma, heri, hari, yo kuru chee important cha. Jaste, amla Pranamchandra jile bhanu bo, boss ko kura gurnu bo, wa ek jana matre kam gurne, de ma kam gurnu cha, re, saith, eura gadi cha, re, saith, tei gadi leer daanu. Ab bachalai, pura unjaanu, ki, ke gurnu, mansele, dhire t, tension chuncha, ra yeh prashna pani, pura, amla le, wa, school ma mechin unda, pani, rahe kuchim. Rahta hari pani, ab estho tiste, estho tiste, bhot, tu sal goyaaliyo, ab yehi sal ko chukura gurnu, bheni, jese sabhi ko shushola, jastu mulai lakshai.
So, Mr. KB has like, a type of question, Mr. Ram asked. He also insisted on transportation, not only like winter time, but throughout the season, almost all the 12 months. Since many of the parents like working, their schedules are not matching with the school timing, and then some parents, they go to job at six, six thirty or seven o'clock.
In the morning.
Yeah, and also children go to school at different times, so, so some of the parents like to match with their schedule and also the walk time and their school time. It's really hard for them, and, and also many parents, they have like problem in the house, they don't go to the job, like paying rent and then buying food is a problem, so. I mean, if, if the school is really doing something about the transportation and for the people, so it's better for our students to get transportation like throughout the year. So, Mr. KB asks.
Okay, thank you.
Ah, uncha. Transportation bhanijesa, ani, transportation bhanale, as a whole, when you see the transportation, ki, eura piscipic khetrala matre transportation, ke sate, transportation ko, asti meli ma eses, daisi, drive in a pair, transportation bhaena, bhanera, ab mona shakshin, koi uta, highway ko chhav chav baslan, koi eta, ollo chau, jese, mere gar, ab mo, eta, Colchester ko border ma chu, mo. Ni apni, auncha ki, aunna, aunna shakcha ki shakti, na, tu bheni, ti kura aru, ki, ab LM Street, O'Brien Center ma matre, bus dinu, transportation dinu, ki, as a whole when you see, bharigo kura bharinde, jee, alikhi di buzin na ma.
Uh, Durga also has a question about the same transportation, but he's just little bit different than others, like, I know, like, last year, last two, three years, like, we have been providing transportation only in winter. So I think most probably in eighty-seven LM Street and O'Brien Center. About people living the other side of
Other side town?
Highway side and also downtown and also where outside of Colchester, so is it for only like some group of people or, or is it for like everybody?
That's a great question, thank you. Yeah, we need to look at that.
Aru, 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 kasee bharakune prashna sah, bheni, atavas sujha prasalla sah, bheni, shodhna shaknu cha, very highly. Amar jee tabay bolno bhaas, jastu laghi tar a might mute, okay, aav bhanu sah. Waale, bhanu ba, wa, bhai, daadu arle, saath le, bhanu bo, kesh may, a, thigecha guru kani, ramro cha, ki na banda, hari, amlu, abo amlu alik sida, teti napudne manse, hai na? Amla teti buze kachha, hai na, tete, saath bhaiarle, bhanne ko, guruma, thigecha guru kani, thigecha ramro cha.
Um, sir, I don't understand everything about budget and all those things, but I will go with my friends, like, there are questions, I'll go with them.
Ah, mo, Indra boliko, sir, boss sai, yo baji pani paune bheni, jee, doropai de, heri, pai de ko bhai cha, jee, ramro unthe, ki, bhanne, aasate cha, abo waale, koshari manage gurnu cha. Edi abo, main point, abo, amla focus ne, boss ko, student ko, boss ko laghi cha, amli, abo, jun, amli, when you see, take you, artha, tu bela dekhine, us bela dekhine, amli, focus garega, boss ho. Ra isko laghi cha, abo, aur kura banda pani, jati, aur banda pani, na ni le, suvida cha, paus, katha bada uncha, aur bache, aur tirabanda pani, na ni re ko laghi, jee, ekdam suvida hos. Abi yo, you ma, abo, unnerla, dhire gar uncha, abo samar tirata, abo, kei cha, hai na, abo milera, bheni, jaanu aune garcha, chara, yo, you ma, jee, dhire samas yaun, ra sahmo, majde vichar garna, bheni, amla focus se tahi cha, abo, dorobos, yadi, abo, aur focus se tesh may, new bheni, kura, mera bharacha.
Okay, uncha. So, Unis dad, Indra, he also asked the same question about transportation. So if we provide transportation like during winter months, it's no season, like, I know last, last year, I think they got only one way. So, he wants at least two-way transportation, coming to school and going back home. So, I know winter time is really hard for our children, and then many children, they don't have right home from school to home and home to school, so it is better to have two-way transportation for our students.
Okay, thank you.
Etin alani, amla prashna, aur cha, hai na, jastu laghi. Ajur, mo euta, yo, boss ko sandar ma ma feri, ma parke, tei point ma, sundey huncha? Ajur. Jaste, abo, bar se pichhe, por ko sal sama, ta boss di rasa, ab iswali, jee, ke uncha, bhanne kura, ab iswasta cha, hai na? Tar, abo, ekoro matre, tei pani, char mayna, maximum char mayna, kaso, matre, boss deko cha, ab budget le, no tu ge ra ho, ki, saith, teti, char mayna, matre, chhuti ako. Artha, yoo chee, khasai, ke, ke uncha? Uh, vishis gari, amler kochi, amler kochi, ichcha kecha, bheni, edi budget le, pugena, bheni, budget le, pugena, bhanne kura, amli, buzna, buzna paun, hai na? Edi budget le, puksa, bheni, amla dorai, ki na, pukda, hai na, budget le, chhutaiyo, bheni. Tu amla janna cha, ai, edi bhaiyo, bheni, diyo, bheni, edi dorai, dios. Tar, char mayna, dui mayna, matre ko laghi, ta matre, ta budget ta, teti matre, ta noonu parne, budget ta. Chhutin thake ri.
Oh, so, so, Ram also has the same question about transportation, he just started the first one, so he's still wondering, like, like, school budget, do we not have budget for like whole month, whole, like, whole year for the school transportation, do you, do we only have the limited budget for the transportation?
Okay, thank you, the question.
Uh, aur kasee ka prashna sah, very? Aru, saathu, bheni, thige bheni, ra, ab mile, jee, te kura, chal kura, bhanne kuchu, ra, tete de, kura kani.
So, I think we are all, all done.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, and we will gather information, and our next week's meeting, we can address some of these, these questions and concerns.
Ah, ami, ab aile, daray daray, gara, amla prashna ra, rahe, hai na, isko laghi, dhira dhira, dhane bad. Tabalai, isko, sabbar jaba, amli, aur kaapta go, bai thakma, dinso, aur kaapta go, bai thamwa, tabay, aunho la, bhenne sah.
Okay. So, this will close public comments. And our next agenda item, it is now time for the budget presentation for the school year. For the school year twenty, twenty twenty-two, and I think Nicole, are you gonna start?
I'm starting, I'm starting.
You are, okay, great, Robin, thank you.
Hold on, one moment, sorry.
No, thank you.
Can you just interpret what Tori just said, and then I'll say one more thing?
Uh, aile, ab amla yo, public comments, jun sai thiuni, yo, public comments, aile, tabay bharasi, prashna, atavas sujha prasalla, goya, hai na? Ab es pishaadi, bheni, go, waale, budget ko presentation gurnu cha, hai na? Uh, tu, abo, this may, boshin, aavas, vini, jastu kura sah. Okay, Miss Kostin, you can say now.
Thank you, Tool. Um, so, Tool is one of our amazing liaisons, and unfortunately, has a very busy night tonight, doing other work this evening to support our community, so he is going to have to jump off, so the remainder of the presentation tonight will not be interpreted. But if any of you would like to stay on, or like a followed-up interpreted presentation, we can try to schedule that at another time.
Thank you, Tool.
Okay, no problem. Uh, yeah, aile, no, any custom, aile, mile, eura, zeben, eura, translation, kam gurnu parne, jee, mile, jee, yo, public comments ko laghi, matre, ma, ya, aunshu, bheni, thiun, na, ma, aune thi na, ki? Uh, ab yaadi, waale, presentation gurnu cha, ab amla jee, interpret garega, time dhire laxa, dhire laa ma, uncha, waarko. Tabay bharasi, baxnu uncha, buznu uncha, bhanne, baxnu, baxnu bhanne, kei farak par gayna, hai na? Atavas, tabay bharasi, jano bheni, shaknu uncha, kei kura, isko buznu cha, bheni, amli, pishaadi feri, aur ko bai, buznu sakinsa.
Thank you.
Okay, tabay, abo, jaa da, bheni, jaga, ki?
Good night. Good night.
Thank you, oh, goodbye.
Bye.
Bye. All right, I, I just wanted to introduce myself. First of all, Sean can't be with us tonight, so I'd like to introduce the administrative team that's with us, I'm Robin Hood, and I am the Director of Support Services and Early Learning. And this is my colleague, Nicole Mace. She is our, our Finance Manager, and my other colleague, Kirsten Colgard, who is our ELL Director. And I got picked tonight because Kirsten said, well, Robin, this is your last year, it's your fortieth year, so maybe you want to be the one to start off with the presentation.
Well, let's just stop you right there for a second and congratulate you for serving Winuski Schools for forty years, oh my goodness.
Well, it has been a real pleasure, and I love my job, and I love our kids and our families and everybody. So I'm going to share the screen, and the way it's going to work is I will do just a simple introduction, the one that Sean does every year. Nicole will do some discussion around the budget, and she will stop and give time for questions, but also feel free if you have questions while we're talking. After Nicole, I will do an overview of staffing and things that go into the special education budget, and then I'll have time for questions. And then Kirsten will talk about the ELL budget, and again, she'll have time for questions. We will have a parking lot, if you come up with a question that we can't answer, which over the years, you always do, and give us a little bit of homework, which is great. We will keep those questions and we'll get them answered, and then Sean and Nicole can bring those back to you next week. So I'm going to share the screen now and put on our presentation.
It wouldn't be right if you left without any homework assignments.
No, it would not, hold on, please. I had it all ready. There it is, okay. And because I wanted it, I just want to be sure I'm able to share the screen, I am. And I'm going to get this in presentation mode for us all. Here we go. Can everyone see that, okay? So again, thank you for having us, and we miss Sean tonight, but we guaranteed him that we will do our very best to answer all your questions and represent him well. I would like to just start off with the end statement that was so great to hear Tori talk about at the beginning of our school board meeting tonight, when she did the introduction, and just wanted to let everyone know that this is something that we've worked really hard to keep alive at our leadership team level and across the district, and Tori's right, this was an end statement that was developed by the community, so we're really pleased that we've worked together on it and that we are following it. So, you can see in green, college and career-ready, and productive and successful lives, and engaging in their local and global community. And this starts, you know, with our kids that come into the preschool. And you can see here, we worked hard to develop graduation expectations, and again, when we are budgeting or planning, we're thinking about the teaching and the learning and the implementation of these expectations. And again, these were developed by multiple stakeholders as well. And I think you'll see with our graduation proficiencies, they really are embedded into those expectations, and we have a lot of them, and actually, you know, we have a great diagram I was looking at today, that really shows how each of our expectations folds in certain proficiencies under that, and we really have an idea also of, you know, where kids can work on those proficiencies in terms of classes they take and work that they do. Kirsten, I think this one, oh no, this one was mine, so thinking about some of our goals for our new board members, you'll see that monthly Sean does a superintendent's board report, which we all contribute to, and we will update you on the goals around college and career readiness, healthy, productive, and successful lives, and global and community engagement, as well as local. One thing we're really proud of is we just got an announcement that we have three of our students who are presidential scholars, and that is Hussein Amori, Evelyn Manji, and Penny Lee, and we're really pleased with that, that's really exciting. Under healthy and productive lives, we are doing anti-racism work, as is our school board, and these are just some examples, and of course, our local and global community engagement is our capital project, which you will continue to hear about throughout the school year. And now I'm going to let Nicole talk a little bit about our budget assumptions, and again, if you have questions, you can ask her while she's talking, but she's also got some time at the end of her slides to talk with you.
Thanks, Robin.
Nicole, sorry, um, on, on that point, there's no hand icon in Zoom, unfortunately. How would you like us to indicate that we'd like to ask you a question without interrupting you, like I just did to Nicole, sorry about that?
That's okay. I'm okay with being interrupted.
Uh, great, in that case, if you don't mind going back a slide, Robin, when you were going through the local and community engagement, and mentioned the capital project as an example of local and community engagement, could you please explain how the capital project is an example of local and community engagement?
Well, I think part of the local engagement was engaging the community in terms of supporting such a big project financially, and engaging them in really developing with the school district, the needs that are there in terms of needs for more space for students, needs for different kinds of environments for learning, the engagement of, of all of you as taxpayers in supporting that, and then I, I would say further engagement in terms of just the people that will be involved along the way. This isn't my slide, so if, if
I can jump in with a couple of
If either of my colleagues want to jump in too, I know Nicole has done a lot more with this one.
So, and in, in terms of students having exposure to the capital project and what it means for their engagement in the local and global community, we've done a lot of tours with student groups throughout the project, and we've started to make connections between some of the leaders on the project in terms of careers and possibilities for just sort of making those connections between the work that's happening literally in our backyard and opportunities that may exist for them to pursue different career paths. So it's been both, as Robin said, that the project itself involved a lot of dialogue with the community in, in both visioning what it's going to look like, and building support for the for the project, which we'll continue to need over the next several years. But it's also been a wonderful tool for student engagement, to really sort of make the connection between the investments that this community is making in the facility, but also opportunities that may come to do internships and more community-based learning as a result.
Great, thank you.
So, Robin, I think you were still showing your slides, so do you mind advancing, or do you want to stop sharing and all?
I can stop, or which would you prefer? Why don't I stop sharing and let you do it?
Okay.
There.
I'm on the right slide, so it shouldn't be too long. Are you with me? Wait.
Yes.
You just need to get it on present.
Yeah. There it is. Okay. So, for those of you who are new to the board and/or a new budget buddy, this is your first time going through this process. You're in good company because it's my first time also. And so I am definitely open to feedback as we go through the process. It's pretty much a well-oiled machine at this point. And so I'll be making some minor tweaks maybe along the way as I see opportunities to maybe convey information differently. But certainly this needs to be worked for everybody. So I'm definitely interested in your feedback in terms of the level of information that's provided. And so certainly feel free to interrupt right now as I go through some of these pieces if you have questions or I'm not being clear. So prior to developing the budget, we nailed down some assumptions. The first of which I think we, Sean discussed with the school board maybe one month ago. And that was our intent to approach this as a level services budget. So I think in prior years, there's been some efforts to increase staffing or increase certain programming, add transportation opportunities. But given the demands of the capital budget or the capital project on the budget that, and the uncertainty around the pandemic and education funding in general, that the approach we would start off with this year would be to present a level services budget, which assumes we will have some increases due to salaries, benefits, you know, utilities, et cetera. But that we would not be adding positions. So that's really the starting point. And then this slide really talks through some of the budget assumptions. Some are known, i.e. we know what the health insurance rates have been filed at. We know what the dental insurance rates will be. And others are estimates based on prior years. So I'm not going to go through these individually. They're also in the packet that you had emailed to you. But I think the biggest piece for you to know today is that the budget that you, the figures that you were presented with, anticipated level services and have a phase in of the capital project debt over a three-year period.
And on that phase in, this will be year two, right? Last year, we did phase one?
No, we're actually have three more years. So because the USDA loan does not come to us until the project is complete, our first full year payment to the USDA is not due until FY '24. So you have started, you've started the phase in last year. So I guess it's a four-year period. Three more years.
Okay, so though we had it, okay, so though we had a dollar value in the budget last year, the way the financing ended up turning out, we didn't need it. We had to put it aside for this year based on the way the financing worked. Okay. Got it.
So, excuse me, it's not a three-year plan. It's three more years after FY '21 being the first year.
Okay.
But that does allow us to smooth out the increase over a longer period of time.
Can I ask a question? Or, sorry, Stephen, do you have a question first?
I'll go after your list.
I was a really strong supporter of the capital project and still am. I guess I didn't realize that the assumption was that then we would be unresponsive to any of the, the needs that might be coming from the community? Or what is the degree to which, if we are hearing on transportation, for instance, that what we have provided in the budget for this year is not meeting the needs of the community? What is the degree to which we can ask for more funding for the level of transportation that the community is saying they need? And like, what is the process that we go about then saying, well, if it's... Is that then meaning that we have to look somewhere else in the budget for it? Or can you just...
Yeah, sure. So that is the decision of the board. So there are a variety of different approaches you can, you can take. One is to increase expenditures. And then there are, you know, corresponding increases in tax rates as a result. So it's a sort of a balancing act in terms of the level of tax rate increase you're willing to present to the voters or that you think the voters would support. And, or you could make decisions to reduce expenditures in some areas in order to sort of reallocating the funds that you have within the budget. So those are all decisions within the board's purview. And this process is really intended to, you know, when, when Sean and I spoke with the board about the, the approach we were taking in terms of level services, my sense was that there was no objection to that. But certainly, once you have an opportunity to sort of really see what that looks like and what that means and hear from the community, it's the board's prerogative to give us other direction. Thank you.
And I guess just coming off of this is question. I wonder if you're able to talk about how community input was included in the assumption to level fund the winter bus?
So we're assuming that the winter bus will continue. There, we received no indication from the board at this point that there was an interest in expense. So this process that we're going through right now is the way we obtain community input and feedback.
Oh, okay.
And so, so the public comment that you just heard is part of the process of the board weighing different factors as you make decisions about whether or not to increase, you know, add winter transportation routes or whatever, you know. So the community input process started tonight.
Thanks for that clarification. And would you mind explaining a little bit about the increase in tuition that's anticipated for the pre-K program?
Oh, so this is just the, the 2.6% increase was the amount that the tuition payment increased over FY '21, right? Let's see where we're in right now. Yeah, so we received numbers from the state indicating what the tuition rate will be for the next school year. And it was a 2.6% increase over this year's amount.
And what that is, Steve, is that Act 166 amount that parents are entitled to 10 hours of free preschool. And every year, the state sets a rate of what we will pay for that 10 hours.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the assumptions?
On the, and we may get to this later, the HRA. We've been budgeting about 75% of the total liability. And I think we've been coming pretty close. Is that still a good assumption based on our last at least two years of history?
Yes, unfortunately, the last two years of history are not great to go by because this past year, so many people were unable to access medical services that, you know, what happened in this past year isn't, I don't think, a really good indicator of sort of a normal pattern. And then this year, the new statewide healthcare benefit is taking effect in January. And under that benefit, the district pays the first, first dollar expense of the HRA. So the prior negotiated agreement, the employees paid the first 10%. And now the district pays the first, I don't remember the percentage.
Oh, okay.
It's a flat dollar amount.
Okay.
So I think, you know, we met, we have, we did not come to 75% last year. It was more in the mid 60s, I think. But I feel confident that sticking with 75%, given the transition to that new benefit is safe.
Okay, so even, even with us paying the first dollar, the 75%, you think is still a good number?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any data to use to suggest otherwise.
And just for those that are new to this, this, this one to me is indicative of something that we, we will look at and look down through. The HRA expenses is how the district pays for the portion of healthcare out of the reimbursement arrangement that, that's there. And the way it works is we have to pay X number of dollars per employee potentially up to a max, right? And then for all the deductibles and whatnot. And the guidance we got early, when the employee had the first dollar in, was that if we only budgeted for about 75% of that total, because not everybody's going to use their entire deductible every year. So that 75% is an assumption we brought in, in the first year and said, we're not going to budget for the whole 100% because we're pretty likely not going to use it. We'll go down to 75. And that was the basis of my question is how had we been doing against that? With the state taking over the health insurance piece of this, the new contract with the state has the school paying the, the first portion of the deductible for all the employees. So, you know, whereas before somebody may have only paid their deductible and been done with it, the school had no liability in there.
Yeah.
So this one is one of those little fuzzy areas that, that you get to work with over time.
Yeah. And I, my intent is to, to check in with my colleagues around the state just to get a sense of where they are now that we're all on the same plan. Sort of what, what budget assumptions there? Just to, you know, if everybody else is budgeting 80% and I, you know, if we're way off, I'd like to know that. And that's one benefit of having the same benefit in every district is we can compare notes more easily.
And another 10% increase in health insurance.
Right.
I have a couple more questions, but if this is holding up a whole lot of additional presentation, I can hold them.
Are they around the assumptions?
Well, one's about whether the, the work done by the, around anti-racism has been kind of incorporated into this budget. So specifically, whether or not to include the contract for the school resource officer? Is that in this budget or not? Or where does that show up within the functions, the various line items? Or is it level funded? But if it's not the SRO, that could be utilized for other safety or wellness, you know, type of things? So that's, that's one question. And the other is about the role of the liaisons and whether there's a partnership with the city as well? That's under discussion that is included in this.
So Kirsten can talk more about the role of the liaisons in the Working Committee Challenge Grant in her, her presentation on the ELL program. The, this budget does include, I think it's actually a little bit less money in it because I got a clearer picture from the city, the cost of the SRO. But yes, that, those funds, it's a placeholder. So those funds can be reallocated to a different line item if the board makes the decision not to move forward with that agreement with the city through this budget process. And the board has not given us any direction to date on funding for the anti-racism work. So that's not included in this budget, but it's part of the discussion and part of this process. This is going to absolutely involve, you know, what funds the district wants to allocate toward that work. But we have not yet had a conversation about funding and budgeting for the anti-racism work.
Do we have any outlooks for any of the cost of that work?
Right, so I think on Wednesday, December 9th, Indra and Rainbow are presenting the budget that they've worked through with Nicole and Sean. And this will be the first time that we've actually seen the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah. So those, those two conversations will hopefully converge.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay, so I am going to move us along just because there's a lot more to get through and hopefully some of your questions will get answered along the way. But I also don't mind being interrupted. So you received as part of your packet, the budget sliced and diced in a lot of different ways. So overall, the budget, the level services budget still has an increase of $1.08 million, which is a 5.71% increase in expenditures. And the different spreadsheets show you what that looks like across the different programs so that you can see, you know, area by area. And that, that first sheet by program is similar to how we report to the board on a quarterly basis, sort of budgetary performance throughout the course of the year. So that should become a familiar tool for you. So, and then the other pages look at, it's the same information just presented by functions. So whether it's regular instructional programs versus special programs versus support services versus debt service, you can sort of see where the, you know, where the costs, you know, costs are increasing and or decreasing across those functions. And then objects are more, more, another way to look at the data in terms of what are we spending on salaries, benefits, supplies, that sort of thing? So don't expect the numbers to match up nicely across those different spreadsheets because you're really looking at the data from different angles. The important part is you want the bottom line to add up every time. And that is the overall expenditures. Any questions about that? And I don't know if any of you board members that have gone through this process want to speak to how you've used those spreadsheets as a way to inform your process or not?
Well, just, just for me, the one question mark we have in the fact that we've, we are currently, we just started negotiations with teachers. And those will probably not finish until June. So we'll actually have a budget passed before we finish the discussions and negotiations to understand what the salaries actually, actually mean. So that becomes one question mark in this, in this whole piece. So.
Right.
That's just a note for, for anybody that hasn't seen this. We're, we're making some level sets of assumptions as we go through this, and that's one of them.
Any other questions or comments? About this or the spreadsheet I sent?
Yeah, no, just in with regards to the spreadsheets, all I usually do is go down through and look at the, you know, the deltas year to year, some are going to be positive, some negative. Particular items get moved around and lumped with others. So I kind of rely on, on Sean and Nicole to at least summarize some of that movement, which we'll either get to or it'll be noted at some point.
Yeah. And, and, and in areas where you're seeing reductions or lower numbers on the program side, much of that has to do with salaries. And so someone, people coming in, we had a number of retirements this past year and we hired folks who are lower on the salary schedule. And so it's not a reduction in the person or the program. It's just a difference in the salaries for the people in the position. All right, I'm going to move on. So this pretty much restates the fact that at JFK and the middle high school, we're not proposing any new investments this year. We know the district does want to support anti-racism work. But as we just said, that, that's not currently built into this budget and we'll, we'll hopefully merge those two conversations starting next week. And we'll, we'll hopefully merge those two conversations starting next week.
One other question. This is only an expense budget, which assumes that the only income available to use is taxpayer dollars. Are there additional, like grant seeking work? You mentioned the, the working communities grant, but other like private philanthropic dollars that are being sought to support some of this incredible, important work happening?
Yeah, so as we move through this process again, ye- yes, what you're seeing tonight is the expenditure side. As we get clearer numbers from the state and as we finalize our federal budget and we'll have a better sense of the revenue picture. We do have several grants that funds work in the district. And we also have a, over two million dollars of federal funds that come to the district to support work. So we'll go through those pieces of the budget with you later in the process. And Emily Hecker, our communications and development coordinator, director, sorry, Emily, does amazing work identifying support and opportunities for projects in the district, both small and large. So we're, we are actively pursuing funds to support the work in the district.
One of the things that has absolutely just mystified me over the 10 years I've been doing this is you saw the five point seven one percent spending increase in here. Nicole mentioned the revenues that we then would get input on from the state to offset the cost. And then you've got equalized pupils and you've got the CLA, which we'll talk in depth about later. The thing that mystifies me is at the end of the day, there is no, and we had a chart on this last year. There is no correlation between your spending in any given year and the actual tax rate changes. There, you look at it and Alex is the statistician, but you look at those numbers. I don't care what kind of a test you put to them. I don't think there is any correlation that can show. So it's really a, it's really a, an amazing process that you can get to the end of it and fund education in total.
Yeah.
But you'll see that as we go along. And, and so right now we're really focused on the spending piece because the revenues, we don't know yet. The equalized pupils, I don't know. We got some yield data today, right? Or yesterday? So that's a start.
I'll talk about that in a bit.
Okay. So, but anyway, there's a lot of variables in here that don't all tie everything together in a nice bow later.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And I, I think I will talk a little bit. I think, so maybe this is as good a time as any. So just for those of you who are not as familiar with our, the way our funding of schools in Vermont work, we have a statewide funding system. So the budgets get developed locally. They get approved locally. But then the state is responsible for funding all the budgets that get approved in every community in the state. And they have developed a pretty complex formula to do that. And the funds all get paid out of the state's education fund, which is funded primarily by sales and use tax. And Homestead property tax rate, or property taxes actually pay the least amount towards into the education fund. So as Mike says, it's very difficult to predict year to year because the ultimate tax rate is a function of a lot of factors, some of which are in the district's control and some of which are not. And so really in this process, the board focuses on, you know, the resources that are needed to support the goals of the district, the ends of the district. And at the same time, needs to be mindful of the state picture because that will ultimately determine what the tax rate is going to be for the community. And that, that is going to, in some ways, affect support for the budget. That's certainly not the only factor that drives people to support or not support a school budget. But I think it is, it is a factor. So I think you, you sort of have to keep your eyes in both places, both sort of the needs of this district, but also understanding what's happening at the state level. So you understand what it'll mean for the taxpayers in the community.
And so some of the challenges based on that is funding education with sales and use rooms and meals. This year, that's been one large variable, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And tax rates, and the reason we're going to get into it, Kirsten's going to talk a little bit about enrollment next. But tax rates are at a very high level, a function of your education spending per equalized pupil. And your education spending isn't your total budget, because that would be too easy. It's your total budget plus your federal funds minus any offsetting revenues. So there's a whole nice formula that goes into determining what your education spending is. But once you get that number, you need to divide that by your equalized pupils, which is not the number of actual students you have, but based on the demographics of your student population.
I'm sorry, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I'm right here on the vermont.gov talking about education taxes. Property taxes contribute sixty-seven percent of the total education fund revenues.
That's the, the combination, I think, of residential and non-residential.
Yes, residential and non-residential.
Yeah.
I was talking about residential.
Okay, okay, because the value added taxes are significant, but the property taxes, residential, non-residential make up the bulk of the education fund.
Correct. I was referring to, sorry, I was referring to the Homestead residential tax. The non-residential tax also, it's like a third, a third, a third. Thank you for that clarification. Other questions? Before I turn it over to Kirsten to talk about our enrollment, which is different from equalized pupils.
Okay.
So should I stop sharing? Or do you want, I'm happy to advance the slides if you tell me.
I can just tell you when to click because I know you have a couple more slides after this, so.
Okay.
All right. Um, hi, everyone. It's, it's nice to see everybody, even if it's on a screen. I hope we are able to get together in person sometime soon. So I was just going to talk a little bit about enrollment. And as you can see, the total overall enrollment for the school district this year is down thirty-four students. That's, the, the main reason for that is the loss of one of our preschool classrooms. And that is due to the capital project, but it's only a temporary loss. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we will have that classroom back. And there's also been a little decline in preschool numbers as well because of COVID. Some families have chosen to just keep their three and four-year-olds at home this year as opposed to sending them to preschool.
Kirsten, can I just say that we, we did not lose one of our classrooms? The Winuski Family Center closed and we did move one of our classrooms down. Just so that people know, we haven't lost the two classrooms that are ours.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification, Robin. And so one thing I wanted to mention about possible future enrollment. When we get to the ELL portion of the presentation, you'll see that our ELL numbers have been declining slightly over the last couple of years. And that's mostly due to the, the current federal administration's policies around refugee resettlement. There have been fewer, you know, refugees resettled in the last four years as a result of those policies. And particularly this year, we've seen a decline because of those numbers declining overall nationally. And then also because of COVID kind of stopped resettlement for a while this year. But with the Biden-Harris administration coming in, they've made a commitment to increased refugee resettlement. So we would likely see an increase in resettlement in Winuski over the next four years as they're committing nationally to boosting those numbers. But we will kind of have to see how that shakes out with the current situation with Winuski housing being very tight and the vacancy rate in Winuski being very tight. But I'm optimistic that we'll continue to see increased refugee resettlement and higher ELL numbers in the future.
Kirsten, a quick question on the pre-K numbers.
Yeah.
It's, I'm guessing that's actual enrolled pre-K students physically on campus and doesn't include the Act one sixty-six kids.
Robin, can you answer that?
Steve, it's a mix of both. And part of why it is down also is not just that the family center closed. It's also, we've had different programs and other communities close as a result of the pandemic. And as a result of the pandemic, we've, we've had fewer families right now that want to enroll their child in a Act one sixty-six program. We're expecting that that will go back up. But this is, this, this is our students on campus and our students that are in Act one sixty-six programs beyond.
Okay. And I'm curious, on the key budget assumption slide, the pre-K number was, I think it was eighty-five. And I'm wondering how, how does Winuski estimate that number?
We look at trends over, you know, the past five years or so and look at how many people are taking part in Act one sixty-six. The, the other thing, we expect that this will go up, this will increase because right now we only have the two Head Start programs. One is a Head Start and then Early Childhood Special Ed Collaborative. And then the other one is a Head Start program. With the new addition, we will have more classrooms, we'll be serving more kids, and it won't all be based on income. So we'll have more options for families as well. So one more year and then we'll have a lot more flexibility around kindergarten right on campus.
Fantastic.
So this next slide is looking at current staffing levels for this current school year. So the column on the left is around instructional programs. We have eight FTE in our, our leadership team as administrators. There's the new addition of a curriculum director this year. Previously, some of you might not know that I was, the last five years I've been the director of English language learning and the director of curriculum for the school district. And that, that was a big job. So this year, we hired a new curriculum director, Michael Appolito, who's been amazing so far to have on board. And I'm able to focus solely on the ELL programs. Then as far as teachers, which that, that category of teachers encompasses, you know, classroom, ELL, special ed, all of the licensed teacher positions, we have a hundred and six point two FTE. And then some other teachers that fall into slightly different categories like library, speech, psychology. We have five and then a halftime athletic director. And then for our support staff, you can see we have instructional assistants and program assistants fifty-nine. We have our technology department that is a four current full-time employees. And then the one FTE that's listed as COVID is a recent hire. You know, COVID had, has added so many needs to schools across the country. And we've really seen that, you know, in Winuski, obviously. And so some of the, the ESER funding, which was, is related to the CARES Act that Nicole can speak to if people want more information. We've recently hired an additional support staff for the technology department just to help with getting out Chromebooks, repairing iPads, all of those things. Because as you all know, shifting to remote learning has just put an incredible strain on technology everywhere. And so we've hired that person to support our IT department just for this school year. And then additionally, you know, the health office, we have two and a half FTE. And two of our nurses are currently our, you know, COVID coordinators that are doing an amazing job supporting staff and families across the district with COVID information and handling, you know, situations as they come up. We've hired an additional halftime FTE this year with those CARES funds to support the health office. And then our current administrative assistants, registrar, et cetera, are at nine FTE. And then facilities and maintenance, we have thirteen. That includes, you know, transportation and security. And then the, the kind of other is that group of, you know, our wellness coordinator, our communications director, behavior interventionists, and we have a total of nine FTE there.
Oh, sorry, Kirsten, quick question.
Yeah.
Does Winuski have a twenty-first century program?
Yes, we do. Suzanne Scaffelstedt is our twenty-one C director. And she's been, you know, providing after-school programs and really pivoted the model during, you know, COVID in the last, you know, eight, nine months to provide, like last spring when we went remote, she was providing twenty-one C programs virtually, got a lot of, uh, staff engaged with that and over the summer as well, and continues to do in-person twenty-one C currently for K through twelve right now.
And Kirsten, where do the liaisons fall in this chart?
That is a good question, I think. One, two.
The program assistance or?
Um, yeah, I think so. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that, but I think say, based on their numbers, it would probably be in the program assistant category.
But my understanding was that they were not full-time employees currently? Is that right or?
They are full-time school year employees. And I have a slide later on in the ELL presentation as well that we have four full-time and then two part-time. Any other questions about current staffing? All right. So this, this slide is just really about staffing ratios. And the yellow is, you know, our current rates versus the black is last year's. So you can see that the student to teacher ratios and student to staff are a little lower this year because of the, the, you know, decline in enrollment numbers overall. And then the, so this is, on the left side is student to teacher ratios. And then on the right side is the per equalized pupil ratio for student to teachers. So that's a little different based on our per equalized pupil count.
What does per equalized pupil mean that's different than student?
Um, so I'll take a stab at this and then Nicole can jump in. So equalized pupil means that students based on their, their needs within the community are given different weights, thank you. And so like an ELL student is weighted slightly higher than a non-ELL student. Students who qualify for free and reduced lunch are also weighted slightly more by the state so that when looking at need within a community, more funds can be pushed to schools with, with greater need based on those student numbers. Nicole, do you want to, did I do an okay job of that?
That was a very good job. Thank you.
All right. You did well.
All right. So then this is our long-term staffing plan that the leadership team has developed in the last six years. So what you can see here is our, everything that's listed are our long-term goals to add to our staffing plan to best support our student needs within the district. And then what's highlighted in yellow is what we have added. What's not highlighted yet is what we're still working on. So you can see at JFK, we're still long-term would like to add two ELL teachers because then we could have one ELL teacher per grade level, which is something that Robin has been able to support with special educators over the last few years to really have those tight grade level teams. And then additionally, we'd like to have two more math and literacy interventionists at the elementary and then additional three general IAs to support grade levels, students across the, the school. At the school district, as I mentioned, we were able to hire a director of curriculum this year. And then we also had hired an MTSS coordinator through SIG funds, which are the School Impact Grant Funds. Those are funds, we are in the second year of those. Those are funds, we are in the second year of those funds. They were allocated to Winuski, specifically the high school, because we were in deemed in a in need of comprehensive supports based on our graduation rate. And so those, those funds we've used to hire an MTS coordinator to really develop our EST and MTSS systems at the high school to to really target early intervention particularly so that we can flag students early and be able to support them more comprehensively through their high school experience, you know, to increase our graduation rate. And then just jumping over to the other side, the
Can you just explain what MTSS means?
Oh, sure, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so MTSS is a multi-tiered system of supports. So it is looking at tiered intervention and tiered supports for students. So it's really looking at what, when tier one intervention was, which is what like an educational jargon means, you know, the mainstream class instruction, when that is not, you know, not working for a student, when students are struggling in that mainstream class. And the MTSS system really looks at what do we need to do to provide more support for those students? And, you know, so that's where the interventionists, you know, come in and, you know, really developing those plans of like, how do we support in the different area, different content areas and behave, you know, behavior as well? How do we support students best? And and work through those systems to really support them. So the MTSS coordinator is really overseeing, developing, you know, like tight criteria for those different systems so that if a student needs support in math or literacy, we clearly know what those supports are. Teachers can bring those students to the, the team to talk about what, you know, what the strengths and needs of those students are and then be able to provide the appropriate intervention. So it's really just getting clear on those systems of how to make sure that every student need is met.
Kirsten, a quick question for you. I hope it's a good question. What languages are offered in Winuski?
What languages are offered as far as foreign language? Okay. French is the the main language that's offered. We have a French teacher at the high school who also does middle school. And then he has, there are other students who are interested in learning other languages. And so he uses some online programs. And then there's also as part of the iLab, which is sort of our personalized learning center. Students are able and have been able to learn other foreign languages through the iLab as a personalized experience. But yeah, French is the primary.
And has there been any conversation that you're aware of in terms of long-term staffing of introducing other languages in classroom instruction? For instance, languages that represent the community like Nepali or Arabic?
It's, it's been something that we've discussed, but not like not formalized into a staffing plan.
Okay, thanks.
And so then, just to finish up what I was saying about that SIG grant, the other, so we're in the second year of that funding. And the other position that's been funded through that is the, an additional high school guidance counselor. Because we really, prior to last school year, we had one guidance counselor, Heidi McLaughlin, who was doing an amazing job supporting the entire high school student body. But it was really, you know, just a huge job and we really need an additional high school guidance counselor. So when we were able to access these School Impact, the School Impact Grant Funds, that was, you know, one that we wanted to make a top priority. Again, particularly to support ninth graders transitioning from eighth to ninth grade. Because, you know, all of the research shows that how, how a student does in ninth grade and does with that transition into high school really shows whether or not they're going to graduate. So our new hire has really focused on building like a stronger transition from middle to high school and supporting those ninth graders in that first year. But just to be thinking about, those are two positions that are only funded through the end of next school year through these grant funds. And that's something that we've been talking about as a leadership team is, you know, knowing that we may want to think about incorporate incorporating them into the local budget after that and, you know, thinking about that. So that's on the table, but not for this current budget. And then additionally, we've
Point of clarification, I, my understanding is that all of these positions are, are in the budget. It's just the share of our taxpayer money that would need to cover it would need to increase in order to maintain that staffing level. But there aren't other positions that aren't included in these numbers if they're SIG funded, are they?
So, um, I, tell me if I'm not answering your question correctly, I want to do my best. So the current, the current ones that are SIG funded are, do not impact our local budget at all. They are purely those additional state funds. Additionally, this halftime math coach and the, and a portion of about, I think about fifty percent of the Director of Curriculum are also federally grant-funded. So that there's less of an impact on those positions on the local budget. The art and music positions that we've added in the last couple of years are part of the local budget. And then anything you see that's not highlighted is, you know, something we're hoping to add in the future, but have not added or proposed to add yet. Did I answer your question?
Um, I, I think so. But let's keep going.
Okay. Any other questions about the long-term staffing plan? All right. Thanks, Nicole, it's back to you.
Back to me. So these are, again, figures that that will help us estimate certain costs on the expense side and, which is more the pre-K tuition, tech center, transportation assistance. So we get reimbursed from the state for a certain proportion of our costs for transporting students to the different tech centers that they attend in the region. The state also sets a, what they call an excess spending threshold every year. We don't typically come close to that, so we don't need to worry about it. If we were going to come close to that in terms of our spending for equalized pupil hitting eighteen thousand dollars, any dollar we spend beyond that gets double taxed. But those are the numbers that we've received from the state and that are, you know, pretty, you can pretty much count on. But that's it. Today, we received the December, what's called the December one Tax Commissioner Letter, which is a statutorily required letter where the Tax Commissioner, working with the Agency of Education, has to estimate what it believes property tax rates may be for the coming fiscal year. And those rates are derived from a component of the education formula, which is called the yield. And there's a property yield and there's an income yield. And the higher the yield, the lower the tax rate. So today's letter indicates that they're, they're projecting the yield will drop from, on both the property and the income side. So just to back up a little bit, some Vermonters pay their education, their homestead property tax rates based on their income. A large percentage of Vermonters pay their property taxes based on income. So if you earn less than a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in income, you're eligible for a property tax credit. And so that's, and we'll get more into that, but further on, we get through this process. And I'm certainly happy to share resources with any of you who want to learn more about the mechanics of the education funding formula. There are some videos and good resources on the Tax Department's website. But the upshot is the revenue picture for the state is not great in terms of the sales and use taxes and rooms and meals taxes that come to the education fund. So they're predicting a drop in those revenues primarily due to COVID. There also, a few years ago, the legislature made the decision to transfer thirty-eight million dollars in teachers' retirement obligations from the general fund to the education fund. And it just so happens that FY twenty-two is the year that that takes effect. So we have a combination of both revenues dropping and new expenses being added to the education fund. So that the letter predicted an average tax rate increase of ten cents or nine percent. And that obviously, as an average, is going to vary community by community depending on what your education spending per pupil is and what happens with the CLA. CLA is the Common Level of Assessment. And that is a feature of the formula that is designed to take into account how sales of of homes are performing relative to their assessed value. So it's a feature of the formula intended to sort of equalize property values across the state. So those numbers in terms of equalized pupils and our CLA, we won't know until later in the month. But the projections in the December one letter indicate that it's going to be, you know, a tough year in terms of the, the climate around education funding. Any questions about that or veteran board members, did I miss something in that explanation that would be helpful?
No, I think you, you hit it with the uncertainty piece of it for sure. Just for my clarification, I don't know if I misunderstood you, Nicole, or not, but the property yield is the yield we use for folks that make under the one forty household adjusted gross?
No.
Or is it the other way around?
The other way around, the income yield is for them.
Yeah, okay. Because that seems like a, that income yield is a big difference.
Yeah, they're always different. And then again, it's a mathematical equation, really.
Yeah, no, I just, it was just at the seven hundred dollar difference in the income yield and only a couple hundred on the, on the property yield. I would have, I think I would have expected it to be the other way around. But, okay.
And for the non-residential rates, they're predicting a ten cent increase there as well. So this, these are, this letter really kicks off a whole political process in Montpelier where the legislature ultimately gets to pass a bill that sets the yield. And they have a lot of tools in their toolbox in terms of revenue sources that they can tinker with. And so, so things might happen at the state level. There's the possibility of federal funds coming to help with the lack of, you know, the downturn in revenues due to COVID. This letter does not take into account the the FY twenty-one revenue gap in the education fund. So which is still unreal, we're anticipating ending FY twenty-one with a large deficit in the education fund.
Still in a fifty million dollar range?
I believe so. These numbers do not fill the fund. So they assume help is on the way from some other funding source.
And interesting, just, and just one other note on these yields, we'll have the CLA. We will have, and that'll be pretty solid because that's just straight math. The equalized pupils will have by the end of December. This yield number though is, will have an impact if it changes. This is an estimate and this will have an impact if it changes. But we won't know until the session closes in May what that final number is. So we've already adopted a budget. We have already put it before the voters. We've already gotten a decision from the voters on the budget that we passed and the expected or anticipated tax rate impact. And then this yield number can change at the last minute in May after all that other stuff is done.
Right.
So, you know, this is like nailing Jell-O to a tree. So there's just never anything solid until well after you're done.
Right. And sometimes it's for the good. Usually they try to leave Montpelier with numbers that are better than the December one letter.
Right, right, that's mostly what we've seen.
I just think the other piece here, just to point out, is that the letter does estimate overall growth in education spending statewide on average being three point seven five percent. So again, this, this budget you're looking at is five point seven percent. So it's really going to key off of if, if districts largely stay within that projection. Or it could be, as was the case three years ago, that school boards came in with numbers that were well below the projections or based on pressures due to COVID or who knows what else, capital project, for example. We might see budgets coming in higher. So there's a lot behind, you know, an assumption that I think they do the best they can with the information they they have. But we've been surprised before. And as Mike said, we won't know the final outcome. And historically, the last three or four years, it hasn't been until June. It used to be a little earlier, but. So this chart really looks at Winuski's education spending per equalized pupil over the last, what was that, ten years, nine years? In our rank in the state, you can see in two thousand and eleven, we were two sixteen out of two eighty-six. So we were, you know, pretty low spending. I'd be interested in looking at us and I might try to do this for either, if not this year, future years, sort of how we rank in the county. Because we are, I believe, the lowest in the county or we have been for quite some time. But you can see the investments that have been made over the last decade have really improved our ranking. You'll see in FY nineteen, the overall numbers dropped substantially and that was a result of a lot of the consolidations that took place under Act forty-six, so we have a fewer, a lower denominator. So this just helps, I think, paint a picture in terms of when you evaluate our spending per equalized pupil, which again, does take into account the demographics of our community, how we rank in the state.
Nicole, one of the biggest pieces of the equalized pupil, obviously, is the weighting factors used. That is coming into the legislature again. If they make any decisions this year, would it likely impact the FY twenty-two budgets or would it be twenty-three before that hits?
I don't think so. So, so Mike's question, so the, the weights that Kirsten was talking about that are in the formula. So if you're an ELL student, you have a, you know, it's, I don't know what the weights are off the top of my head, but let's say one point four. Count as one point four pupils. If you're a high school student, you're weighted higher. Pre-K students are weighted point four six. And so, and students living in poverty or free, eligible for free and reduced lunch have a higher weight. But the weights were really manufactured at the time that the formula was written. There's, there's really not a lot of rhyme or reason to why certain weights exist and whether they're the correct weight. So several years ago, the legislature commissioned a study. And they received that study a year ago, which indicated that we were not adequately weighting for poverty or English language learners. And they made some recommendations to change, to change the weight in the formula. And there was a fair amount of interest in the legislature in looking into that study and identifying options to move forward. And then COVID hit, so it sort of stopped in its tracks. There are substantial implications on both sides of the issue. So there's, there's not unanimity. substantial implications on both sides of the issue. So there's there's not unanimity around the state in terms of whether changing the weight is a good thing, because it could have substantial impacts on communities that have enjoyed the benefit of these weights that maybe. I I think any change to the formula may be phased in over time. I'd be surprised if it's something that happens overnight, and I'd be very surprised if it's something that would affect a budget that had already been developed and adopted.
And the only reason I even asked the question in the first place is one of our pieces as a board is advocacy at the state level. And this is one of those issues that requires our advocacy out very loudly within that rank to get this implemented, because it is a benefit.
And just to give more of an update on that, you know, if the study is available and you can send it to the group so that you can see the study, but Winuski would definitely benefit benefit from the study. Winuski would definitely benefit a lot from the new weighting changes. It would be one of the school districts that, you know, would benefit the most. And currently on the legislative, and I think it's one of the things that we need to bring up. There's a coalition of school districts that are trying to form to advocate for these changes right now, right? I think the advocacy group is, you know, they've asked Winuski to join this. Burlington, some schools in Rutland, Pauline, Morete. Is what's interesting about the weighting study is that it's trying to do a good job of not only dealing with ELL students, but also balance the needs of rural communities. So we're not pitting rural committee, rural communities with urban districts like Winuski. And so there is a lot of energy from different school districts in trying to pull together and advocate at the legislative level to make these changes.
I just wanted to mention too, that the the Senate Ed Committee has visited Winuski twice in the last three years about this specific issue. And so Sean and I and others have spent time talking with them, you know, helping them understand our programs and how how the weighting study would, the weighting changes would impact Winuski and how helpful that would be.
I gotta go, folks.
Thank you, Jane.
Good night.
Night, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
So I have a question, sorry to keep us on that slide, but and this can be just something we parking lot, but I'm just curious how we kind of compare our spending, the spending rank and the the spending per equalized pupil to the goals that the district has. So perhaps our spending is low, but we're also not meeting the goals that the district has set out, like the the end statement, right? So I'm just wondering, and like I said, we can parking lot this, like how you kind of evaluate those two things next to each other?
I think that's a great discussion for the board to have as a board. As you, as you start to weigh different options.
And I think part of this is also, like if you also put a four column on this, Nicole, the fourth column would be like, what's the voting percentage of support of the of the budget, right? Like only, it's only really been recently that we've been having a high percentage, you know, I think a two to one ratio of of support, but there have been budgets, and you'll see it at the lower end where like fiscal year twelve where it went lower. I think this, the community didn't support the budget that was proposed. And 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 there were no's. And Mike might be able to give a history of that a little bit more. Mike and Cory might be able to give a better history of that.
Yeah, a lot of the a lot of passing a school budget is getting enough people out to vote. This town will support schools as long as you're in a reasonable path, right? Twelve fifteen percent increases will get exceptional amounts of scrutiny as they should. But reasonable budgets have passed.
I I really appreciate Alison, your question about evaluating our spending based on our learning goals and whether we're meeting them or not. I think that is a worthy conversation for us to get into in terms of how we're actually measuring, how we're meeting those goals. And I, and the second thing I was thinking is that we used to have a chart on the the votes for like the last ten years. How much they passed or didn't pass. That would be.
I'm sure we can bring that back for.
Yeah, it's in the data somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other one, just for a reference, the other one, Nicole, for a reference is the percent spending increase and the percent tax increase. Compares over the years. That's already done. It doesn't necessarily have to be updated. But I think it would be interesting for folks to see the severe lack of correlation in that.
So just so you have another picture. We do have one sort of capital set aside account, that's the capital reserve account. That is funds that are set aside and approved by the voters to do this, to set aside funds for capital improvements. That's different from the Capital Project. But there's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the capital reserve account. And coming, you know, in FY twenty, the district had a fund balance of seven hundred and three thousand dollars, which are funds that the the district or the board has a fair amount of discretion over the use of. And our audit is not complete, but it's close enough where they were able to give us an estimate that we were likely to end FY twenty with an additional one point one million dollars added to the fund balance. So that bring would bring us up to one point eight million dollars in fund balance, which is another tool you have at your disposal as you think about the budget.
Out of that one point one million, aren't we required, or don't we have to keep like seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand of that aside for the bond payments? Is that where that is?
That's FY twenty-one.
That's in this one. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
FY twenty, that surplus was really, you know, due to, I think, a lot of different factors, but the big one was COVID. And we did not have a lot of, you know, a lot of the spring sports, extracurriculars, special education costs were far lower. Transportation costs were far lower than we anticipated in FY twenty.
Yeah. So just a couple of other notes on this one. The capital reserve, when you put it into that fund, you can only use those funds for capital upgrades, buildings, equipment, things like that. The fund about the straight fund balance, like Nicole said, you have more discretion on how you can use it. One of the comments I did hear during the Capital Project, you know, all the meetings that we had as we came through, is why haven't we put any money aside as we've gone along, so we don't have to do this all in one fell swoop? We haven't put a significant amount of improvements into the high school building, say, since probably the sixties? Or when they were built. So one of the things I think we have to consider as a board, and I mean, we're in the middle, we're we're in the middle of building a brand new building and remodeling everything else. But I think that's the time we need to actually start thinking about a line item that goes in there each year. So that when we need a new roof, the capital reserve is in there. We need the new boiler, the capital funds are there. So that, over the next three or four years, that's something we should probably consider is is, you know, a small stipend for a long period of time into that account sure beats fifty-seven million all over the course of three years to fix it all back up. So something to think about. The other piece I look at when I see this screen here is that seven hundred thousand is built probably over the course of two and a half, three years, maybe. It's been building. And the addition of that one point one million, to me, tells me that, yes, some of that is COVID savings. But there is another underlying piece in this budget that is I don't know how to say it best, because I'm going to say it wrong, but in excess, in excess of our actual spending. So I look at that fund balance and even knowing there's some COVID in there, I I believe that there's some that we can still trim from it or or, I don't know. Trim from it. That's that's what I see in that.
I don't understand what you're saying, Mike, like.
I'm saying where our budget is too high. Simple terms.
If we end with a fund balance every, I think what you're saying, Mike, is over the past several years, we've ended with a healthy enough fund balance that the question is, are the budgets
We build our budgets, we build our budgets as an increase to a previous budget, whether or not we spent it all or not. So we don't really look at, you know, are we building a new budget off the old spending? No, we're building the new budget off the old budget. So I see this over the last couple of years, having about four hundred thousand a year, that there's other stuff in, other monies in there that could be taken out.
So these, this capital reserve, that's the only, like, reserve fund. There's no other kind of like rainy day type fund. I I haven't worked on public budgets as much as, you know, private nonprofit budgets. We're having some buffer that you're carrying forward, even as a nonprofit can be valuable to the financial sustainability of the institution. Not necessary in the case of a a school.
No, no, no. I guess my point was, so those are two different funds. One, you can, the top one, you can only use on the the physical structure of the of the building. The fund balance one is independent, and that can be used pretty much at our discretion. That's the one that you're talking about, the rainy day fund. My 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 concern on that one becomes as it starts getting higher and higher, how high does it have to go before it's not any longer a rainy day fund? But you have to look at the the budget that you're actually doing, and do you give it back to the to the taxpayers?
Can I add something? Can we also pay attention to why it goes over? Because I think sometimes there's changes in special ed funding and things that we do need to budget for that we may not end up using. And so maybe seeing where the excess comes from and then make determinations about that, if there's trends in that. But certainly over the last years, having the capital fund, like we've seen it go down quite a bit from needs that we had in our building. So yes, it is beneficial. And but I do appreciate thinking more strategically about how do we continue to have leftover money and where what what, how could we budget better for some of that, that maybe we're not funding based on trying to keep things at a low rate for our citizens?
So I would just add, I think once the audit is complete, I don't know what your practice is, whether it's been to have an auditor come and meet with the board and answer questions, but that's a question that I think is a good one for the auditor, is what's the appropriate amount of fund balance for a district with the size of your budget? Because yes, you do need to have some rainy day, i- if, for example, you know, unexpected costs arise and, you know, not having to deficit spend is a benefit. And one point eight million dollar fund balance, I think, is not where we want to be, what I would suspect what the auditor would say. So so I think the board needs to have a conversation around what, how can you strategically use those funds to achieve some of your goals?
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. And we have had an auditor there, and I feel like he, there was this idea that there is a range that is good. This might be over that range, but there is a range.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that number about five percent, which is just under a million dollars or so.
That's what I thought too, okay.
So we have asked that question.
Yeah, and I'm really interested in, and I don't know if there's trends, like if there's trends as to why there are, there's leftovers and what that looks like, so that we can look for things that, again, going back to Alison's question of how are we evaluating our spending based on whether we're meeting our goals? Where are the places that our community and leadership team have said that it would be beneficial to spend money in other in some areas to make sure we're covering places that we feel are beneficial to families and students?
So one place you could look, just if you're interested in what happened with FY twenty, is in those spreadsheets, you have the FY twenty budget and the FY twenty actual. And that'll show you sort of okay, where you, where we may have come in lower.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Yeah, it was a hundred and ninety thousand in special ed was the that that's usually the, because it's the biggest line item in the in the budget, that's usually the first place I'll look for those, the biggest of the deltas.
Oh, look at that. I'm at my question slide. I think I'm going to stop sharing because I think we're turning it over to.
Isn't, is Kirsten sharing?
Or who am I? I'm stopping. But I'm happy to take any other questions, because I have a child that just arrived on the scene, so I'm going to turn off my camera. But I want to answer questions before I do that.
Just a short and easy question, Nicole. Would you mind sending out a copy of those slides?
Oh, yeah, sure. I will work with Krista and Sean to get those out to everybody.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Nicole.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to special education. Hold on here. Okay, here we go. So I, it's hard to believe I'm like going into my eleventh year here. Wow, in special ed. And as Kirsten said, she had a heavy lift with curriculum and ELL. I used to be director of special ed and ELL and was so thankful when they gave ELL to Kirsten, but then I got a surprise, and that was what? Early learning. And so I've learned a lot about early learning, which has been great. So I wanted to just start off talking a little bit about just the least restrictive environment continuum. And that is part of federal law that we need to provide a free and appropriate public education to children in what we call the least restrictive environment. And you can see the least restrictive is at the top. That would be a regular mainstream classroom. And so we have lots of kids that are getting all of their special ed in the mainstream classroom. They may have a speech and language pathologist that comes into their classroom, or they may go to her office for some supports, or their special educator may come in, or they may have some support staff come in. And and that is most of our students. We have some other students who have really demonstrated that they have a need for a higher level of support. And some of those children are in our school in what we call special classes. And for the new people, we, I I wanted to just tell you that we do have three classrooms that are called therapeutic alternative classrooms for some of our children who have emotional disabilities. And we have one at the JFK school and one for the middle and one for the elementary. And we built these programs to shift some of our out of district cost and and to do some in-house work. We have our staff trained. We send one staff person to Cornell every year to get trained in therapeutic crisis intervention. And they train all of the program assistants and teachers and people that work in those classes. And then we have some children that might have different needs and a special class on site may not work, because maybe they don't have an emotional disability, but they have another disability that might require a different learning environment, or they could have an Or they could have an emotional disability and still require a more specialized learning environment. So we have children who go to independent schools and some of those schools you may have heard of. Are the Baird School, um, Belkate School, Center Point School. We, we have students at different schools. We did build um, a new position several years ago and that is our out of district case manager. And that is a special educator um, that works within my special ed office. Who really makes sure that we don't wash our hands of kids that go away, that we really still wrap them well. And we work with their families. And oftentimes the younger a child might go um, and get what they need at an independent school. They're able to transition back to us because they may get the skills that they need. Uh, we do have several students who also um, meet the, the bottom hospital bound. Or institutional bound, um, and sometimes what happens is it may not happen through a special ed process. It could happen through um, working with DCF. It could happen through the mental health agency, it could happen with all of us coming together. But um, we're responsible for all of our kids and we take pride in really owning. That and, and staying with our families and really supporting them, no matter what school environment their child's in. One of the things um, I wanted to say is you can look at our last um, three years. We have not had a decrease in enrollment in special ed. We have remained pretty steady from that two twenty-two um, in eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty to. Uh, two twenty-three right now. We actually, December one is our child count date where we submit to the agency of ed, the number of kids we have. So we're really careful to make sure that. Uh, our system is a system called DocuFed, that we have activated all kids who are receiving services. Archived any kids that have moved, but we are, we really try to be very careful to make sure we get an accurate count on those kids. And then um, we get lots of different reports around kids and disabilities and, and different things like that. That are quite interesting. But you can see um, definitely we've had a significant increase um, in the number of kids with disabilities over time. I wanted to just give you um, a comparison uh, about disabilities in our school. And I know that our former school board members have seen this, but I think it's really very telling about um, our student population. If you look at JFK um, and the middle school and the high school. And you compare the number of students that fall under the criteria, the diagnosis or the, or the disability. That would meet the mild category versus the moderate category versus the intensive. Um, kids who meet developmental delay typically are kids who are um, ages five to seven. Who came out of preschool with a developmental delay, that number thirty-four are kids that are. Pretty much in our kindergarten, first and a few second graders. The twenty-five, that's the number of kids that um, receive early childhood special ed services. But to give you an idea, um, that intensive group in the middle, those um, to, to fall under the intensive category. It is usually a child who has an emotional disability or they um, become eligible for special ed. Under the category of multiple disabilities, which mean they may have co-occurring disabilities. So they could have autism, they could have um, an intellectual disability. They may also have an emotional disability, but they usually will have multiple disabilities. And it's very difficult to tease out which one is the primary because they're all co-occurring, so they have that. But in that intensive, those numbers represent kids with an emotional disability, multiple disabilities or autism. If you go to the moderate level, that would be students in our school who have qualified with an intellectual disability. Or they fall under other health impairments, so it could be a medical um, condition. It could be ADD, you know, attention deficit disorder or something like that. And then our students that fall under the mild category um, is usually a student that may. Um, meet the category of a speech and language disability or a specific learning disability. Or they could be hard of hearing. I just think it's good to point this out because as you see, a- as we talk a little bit more about the different needs of our kids. Um, it, it really is different in many ways. You know, we don't have a high number of kids that fall under. For example, the mild category, we have, a- and, and yet we, we have many speech and language needs. But I, the mild category would be if you were just speech and language. So we have many kids in the moderate or intensive that their primary may be one of those things I mentioned. But they could also have the need for speech and language or other services. And this, you know, this is a snapshot of the needs of our, of our children. That really drive our support services budget. And you know, we really work hard to look at our kids, work with our families. And really provide students what they need so that they um, can continue to grow and develop. This is um, the percentage of students on IEPs over time. And this um. The, the arrows, the way that you see this increasing. Is, I will say disturbing to me. To have, I believe this year twenty um, eight point nine for students. Being eligible for special education is significant. It is far above the state average. Um, I don't have the exact state average today, but I can tell you that it's more down at the sixteen. Fourteen to sixteen percent and I can try to get the actual average for you. Um, I, I would like to say that I think there's a couple of things that are going on here. I think one is, it is reflective of the needs of our community. And, and many of the children that we have in our community. Um, it also, I believe. Um, is an opportunity for us. Once we actually do have Act one seventy-three um, for school funding. Which will really, I believe, give us more flexibility in serving all kids and more equity for all kids. And I believe that if not all kids need to actually qualify for an IEP. To actually get some of these services, I think we may see this dip down a little bit. And I'm hopeful that um, that will happen um, with the next leadership and the, and the leadership team. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about um, caseloads. Uh, one of the things you'll, you'll see is that um, we have preschool caseloads that are ranging from eight to fourteen. And so a caseload is if you're a special educator, those are the children for which you would. Um, write their IEPs, provide their specialized instruction, case manage any uh, work with related service providers. You're the, you're the person that's going to connect with parents and families, hold IEP meetings. Be at um, evaluation meetings and such. So you can see our ranges um, at the JFK, at the middle school, the high school. One of the things that I did when I first became director, so that was almost eleven years ago. Is I worked with UBM and had them do a research study with us called Numbers That Count. And what we were really looking at is the, it, it's called special educator density. So you don't really look at the number of kids on IEPs, but you look at the size of your school. And you determine the amount of special educators you should have just with that alone. And then you dig down deeper when you interview special educators and you find out how they're spending their time. And, and um, we, we ended up getting a great uh, report back, which really was a ten-year plan. Where we have, as Kirsten said earlier, we now have a special educator at every grade at the elementary school. And we have increased special educators at the middle and high. Um, and it has really made a difference. We've added the two intensive needs, um, special educators. And as I told you earlier, we added the out of district case manager. This year, um, we have sixteen students that are out of district that are um, at various independent schools. He also case manages, um, we have students who attend Saint Francis School in town who are parentally placed. They, by their parents who, um, many of their parents live in other towns. But it's our responsibility to evaluate them and do child find with them. And they are eligible, if, if they meet the criteria to be eligible for special ed. They don't get an IEP, but they get something called a services plan. And um, we manage that and usually it's a consultation model. But we also do any referrals that we get from Saint Francis, we also do the special ed referrals as well.
There any reimbursement for that? From Saint Francis?
No, no, but, but the other thing that we do get is um, that Saint Francis gets through our. Um, idea grant is every year, depending upon the number of students we have. Um, our grant sets aside a certain amount of money called proportional share. And we use that money um, to work with Saint Francis. Um, the past couple of years, we provided tutoring as part of those students' um, services plans. And you know, it's not a lot of money, but it's, it's money that makes a difference for those kids and helps them.
Do we not get the reimbursement because that's not something that's done because we've not asked for it or?
We're not provide, we're not providing direct services to those students. So we're providing the proportional share funds that pay. Like we hire a tutor or someone that will work with those kids. So we're getting the money upfront through that proportional share that is set aside as part of our um, idea B funds.
Okay.
Oops, I feel like I'm missing, I am missing um, something. I, I don't know whi- which um, chart it went on, but I did also want to let people know that. You know, another position that we have that has been really crucial to the district is um, something called our district evaluator. So we have a special educator that, that is, their assignment is to do all the comprehensive evals. Um, for our students initial and every three years they get a new eval for age um, for, for ages six and up. And then we have one of our um, early childhood special educators that does the evaluations for ages three to five. So one of the, you know, you'll see some things in the budget and you will see some areas um, that are higher than others. Uh, tuition is one that uh, sometimes it, it, it can stay pretty steady at about six hundred thousand. And we've had it up as high as, I think, eight hundred and, and maybe, maybe, oh, maybe just over nine hundred thousand. So it really depends, um, but you know, we're really trying to meet the needs of, of our students. And I think um, that's the hard part. And you could have one student, so you could budget for special ed. And I could have a student walk in tomorrow who is in an alternative program. And it, the, the tuition and what this child needs could be a hundred thousand dollars. And so that's kind of what Mike is, Mike talks about. It's, you know, s- one or two kids in special ed with a lot of need can really change a special ed budget. So we have to be a little bit tricky throughout the year um, as new kids move in and out.
With the example, Robin, of the um, higher intent, higher needs students coming in. Say you, you gotta spend eighty thousand, there is a reimbursement piece on that that comes with it, right? That we, we just don't absorb all the new cost.
Yes, and, and that's the, actually, that's one of the things I couldn't see, but they're, one of our, um, I don't know if we skipped it, Kirsten. Or if it just wasn't there, but there, right now, we're under a reimbursement model. So we are reimbursed um, a percentage for all of our students on IEPs. And then from sixty thousand and over, uh, we keep a lot of um, documents in our office. And we give Nicole monthly reports so that she can um, complete the special ed expenditure report. But for every sixty thousand dollars, um, the state will reimburse. Um, there it is, so sixty percent of our expenses up to fifty thousand are reimbursed. And ninety-five percent of our expenses over sixty thousand are also reimbursed. So when we look at the budget upfront, we always know that a, a good percentage of that will be reimbursable. The thing that you really want to um, have, you know, Nicole will work with the new special ed director next year. We have been waiting and waiting for Act one seventy-three, which will be the new um, funding. Um, for special ed versus now, every fall, we write a service plan. And we predict what our expenses are that will be reimbursable for the following year. With Act one seventy-three, we're really looking at a different model of services and support. So it's really going from a reimbursement model to um, to actually a census model. And that is how the funds will come to the district. So it will um, have a lot more flexibility in programming. And I believe um, equity of services, high quality services, because there's going to be more flexibility. I think we'll be able to even um, serve kids long before they're in need of special ed. Even though we do it now, this will give more flexibility in spending for that. I'd love to entertain any questions that people have.
Yeah, this might be more for discussion and a future budget meeting. Um, cause I'm, I'm getting a little frightened and have asked too many questions already. But the um, how, how much is um. Like, having experienced trauma or poverty um, kind of a contributing factor to. Kids ending up needing special education services and how might um, the. Um, budget for something like social workers that wasn't highlighted yellow. Like the state, or the school hasn't gotten to investing in that, how much would that um, help? Um, potentially to prevent that pipeline of twenty-eight percent of our students needing that intensive.
Wonderful question. We have two social workers that we have funded in the special ed budget for many years. And um, so they're funded partially now, I think through Medicaid and special ed. And um, and there may be one other funding source that we have for them right now. And the goal would be to have two additional ones beyond that that can be used for other students as well. So I, I would say um, you, Liz, you hit the nail on the head. Um, part of why we have our therapeutic programs are for our children who have pretty significant emotional disabilities. Uh, may struggle with emotional regulation, um, may just really need a therapeutic response all day. And really learn to co-regulate with another person. And so, so that's a very big piece of um, the trauma, the poverty. And I would um, say that just, just with my experience over the last decade. I would say that um, probably eighty percent of our students that end up in either. You know, uh, one of these independent schools that I'm talking about or maybe placed by mental health or DCF. Or um, another agency in a residential program have some significant. have some significant trauma as well. You know, it's hard for me to pinpoint the the poverty factor. I mean, I've been in, I've been working um, in the district for four decades. So I've seen a lot of the generational poverty. I I think that that um, poverty definitely can play a role in um, in trauma. And you know, just the trauma of seeing families that are struggling. You know, I'm also the homeless liaison for the district. So kids who really experience that day to day of not knowing where they're going to live or if they're going to lose housing or if a parent is, you know, going to lose a job or whatever. So so there's a range of things and there's a range of why kids might fall under that emotional disability. It could be depression, it could be anxiety, it could be a lot of different things.
As a follow up to Liz's question.
Yes, Alex.
Liz's question, and this doesn't have to be done now, but
Yep.
Interesting to see the cost analysis of how much would it cost to add a social worker? So that when we're looking at like, you know, thinking about what we're going to add to the budget or take away from the budget or what we could, you know, help with the line, the goals of the money that we're spending to it. Because it it that that long term sheet was great, but it doesn't provide a sense of cost for us. And and I think having a sense of like, what does it cost to add a social worker?
It it doesn't cost a lot. And that that would be, I don't know where that, I'd have to look at what you've got for a budget. But a social worker, we have um, purchased it as a related service through Howard Center. And um, I I'm just thinking off the top of my head, the invoice, that the contract I signed for two this year might have been like $95,000 to have two social workers. And they each have, can have a caseload of up to about 15 students. So to me, it's it's um,
Right.
Money well spent. Other um, questions, thoughts? If there's anything that that you would like um, me to put together for you to look at it at another time? If you, you know, shoot Sean an email or whatever, I'm happy to pull together a different way of looking at something for you as well. This is really tonight, just kind of letting you know what's, what this budget is um, covering, that you're going to be looking at.
So my guess is that we've come to the end of the presentation.
Now it's ELL.
Right. Oh, we go to ELL, right? We haven't done that, right? Sorry about that.
And then we're finished.
I'm hearing Liz and knowing myself too is realizing like, whoa, we're taking in a lot of information. So I just want to make sure we're all have the brains, I think, maybe take a couple notes. And that way we can have, come back to it. When we come back to it on next week, be able to digest a lot of this information. So Kirsten, you have, you have your presentation.
I do, and I will try, it's um, you know, a lot of stuff that some of you have seen before. So I will try to go through it quickly because I know.
You want me to put it up for you?
You want me to put it? Um, I actually, I'm sharing my screen, Robin.
Okay.
So I can click through. But yeah, I know, it's that time of night. So hold on, let me just get into present mode. Um, I just wanted to start and say a quick thank you. I feel like the board has always been incredibly supportive of the English language learner programs in the Winuski School District. And I appreciate, you know, all the the additions of ELL staff you've supported over the last few years. So to start off with, just taking a quick look at the numbers across the school district. We're currently at about 37% of our uh, our students across the district qualify for English language services. That there are more students than that that speak English as a second language. These are just the students who are actively serviced. Those percentages, uh, you might recall, and numbers are down a little bit this year. As I said, over the last few years, we'll show some other slides that show that there's been a a decrease um, in the number of ELLs for for the reasons I already mentioned. And uh, feel free to stop me if you have questions as you go. I'm going a little quick just because I know it's that time of night. So this chart kind of shows, you know, from uh, the last uh, seven years of our numbers um, in the community. And you can see it's kind of, um, you know, in 2017, 18, 2018, 19, uh, we saw, you know, larger numbers. Um, and it's it's declined somewhat, you know, this, uh, the last couple of years. And in that amount of time, um, we've added, you know, since uh, 2013, 2014 school year, we've been able to add uh, two and a half um, FTE at JFK, the elementary school, which has allowed us to develop a newcomer program there. Um, at the middle school, we've added 1.5 FTE since then, uh, which has allowed us to start a middle school newcomer program as well. Um, at the high school, we've added one FTE in that time. Um, and as I, as I mentioned, we'd like to eventually add uh, two more ELL positions at the elementary school so that we have one teacher, ELL teacher per grade level.
The last, Kirsten, the last, um, yeah, okay, you you got it on the next page. It looks like your uh, ratios here are about one to 25, give or take. Because last year we dealt with a one to 50, so everything else looks like it's in line. Is that in a good balance? The one to 25?
Yeah, so yes, so yeah, right here, um, what you're referencing, Mike, is that, you know, the um, two years ago, we were at one to 50, the overall ratio for JFK ELL grade level teachers, which was just impossible to adequately service students. Last year, we were at one to 35 because we hired, um, you know, the board approved that uh, adding a position, a new elementary ELL teacher. So we were able to, you know, decrease those caseloads. This year, we're at one to 27 because we have uh, slightly smaller numbers at the elementary. I foresee that the those caseloads will go back up to more around the, you know, one to 35 number. And optimally, you really want to have, you know, uh, a ratio of 20 to 25 ELL students per ELL teacher. So this is looking pretty good this year, but I think in the future, we'll see it start to rise again. Um, and then these are the the newcomer program numbers this year, which are also a little smaller than um, typical. So this year, we have 10 students in our newcomer program um, at the elementary school, uh, 13 at the middle school. And um, at the high school, I uh, we we sort of changed our programs around at the high school this year to for pod specific things. So we currently have about 24 students in what we call a newcomer program, but it's a little different. And I'll talk about that a little bit later.
And Liz, to one of your earliest questions, you had talked about, you know, the process overall and and trying to understand, you know, how we understand the needs and what's what's here. When Kirsten came a couple of years ago and says, hey, I've got a ELL caseload of one to 50 in the, in JFK, it made our decision pretty easy to to make. So those are the things that we're kind of looking for tonight is is what are those things that are, you know, necessary or, you know, critical?
After you download your planner off of our website and imported into Goodnotes app.
Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, what the ELL programs are at each of the schools. So at the elementary, we're in our sixth year of a newcomer program. And what the newcomer programs are, are really to support uh, students who have been in the US for less than two years and have developing uh, English language proficiency. So some need, you know, really um, basic English support. Um, and uh, um, and you know, oftentimes, a lot of our our students have come, you know, coming from a refugee experience, um, as a result of that refugee experience, they've come with interrupted schooling or limited schooling. Um, and so really need support with um, learning academic skills, learning English, um, and just really learning how to be in a school and how to feel feel comfortable and safe and kind of adapt to the US school system culture. Um, so that's what our our programs really look at, our newcomer programs really look at supporting those students. Previous years, we've had, the newcomer program at JFK has been third through fifth grade. This year, we expanded to second through fifth grade because we had lower numbers. I foresee those numbers increasing, you know, in the future because of the change in uh, the federal government. And to give a quick, um, like, I think what highlights that the difference in the administrations. So 2016 was the uh, the largest year for um, refugee resettlement in the United States because um, uh, the Obama administration had really um, pushed, you know, higher numbers of resettlement. So the US resettled 100,000 refugees overall that year. Um, and Vermont resettled about 350. So this past year, uh, the federal numbers were cut to 15,000. Um, and because of that decrease in numbers and also due to COVID shutting down resettlement for a while, Vermont as a whole only resettled 21 individuals this year. 13 of those individuals were resettled in Winuski. So we got to welcome two new families um, who arrived immediately before shutdown. Um, but we were able to to support them through that process. Um, and so, and the Biden Harris administration has committed to raising numbers back up to higher than the Obama level. So 125,000 is their goal. It will take a little while to um, uh, to build up to those numbers because a lot of the the systems um, have been dismantled in the last four years, but they're very committed to building those back up. So I see those, those numbers, I I believe they'll continue to rise. And in the long term, we may need a newcomer program at grades K through two um, to support those students as well. Cause currently we are uh, newcomer students are in kindergarten and first grade are mainstreamed in those classrooms. And again, you know, we have at the grade level for ELL services, we have co-teaching push, pull, push in and pull out services at those grade levels. And currently, you know, we have one ELL teacher at fifth grade and at fourth grade. But our other two ELL teachers are supporting second and third grade and then kindergarten and first grade. So their caseloads are larger. Um, then at the middle school, we're in our fifth year of a newcomer program for grades six through eight. Um, and then we have an ELL teacher embedded on each of the middle school teams that supports uh, high beginner and intermediate ELLs um, in six, seven and eight. And uh, we've really, in the last few years, been focusing on developing, you know, a system to help transition students from the newcomer program into mainstream um, and provide more seamless support uh, for those students uh, through co-teaching and pull out services. Um, and then at the high school, that's where our newcomer program has been the longest running, we're in our ninth year. Um, and that really began during the um, uh, when we have the Nellie May Grant and the Partnership for Change. Through the, that funding, we were able to really develop a strong program. Like I said, it looks different during COVID right now. In the past, it's been students uh, who were in um, our newcomer program would have a double block of language in the morning um, and then have uh, math, social studies, science in the afternoon and be moving around more throughout the day. Because we um, uh, because of COVID, you know, we looked at, you know, we sort of rethought our whole high school structure this year in order to put students into pods. Um, and when we looked at our students that were in our um, ELL one and two classes, so our students that were at that newcomer and beginner beginner level, we felt like they would really benefit from being in a pod of their um, of their own. So we kind of split them into two pods. We have two of our ELL teachers supporting those pods all day um, with shelter thematic language instruction. So they're getting like intensive um, lang- oral language and literacy support all day from those teachers. And we've noticed uh, that this year with having that kind of intensive language support, you know, for for, from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM every day, um, their literacy levels and their overall oral language proficiency just seem to have increased noticeably um, very quickly this fall. And so, and they've been thrilled to be back. We've been able to have all of, all of the students in our newcomer programs have been back four days a week since we started in Aug, uh, in September. That was something we wanted to commit to because we knew those students struggled the most with remote learning last spring. So we really wanted to support them this year. Uh, the other thing that we found this year that's been a positive of breaking the students up into those pods, two pods was we um, we separated them by age as opposed to proficiency level. So they're mixed ELL one and ELL two proficiencies. But one class is um, uh, you know, high school age students, you know, you know, in that regular life 14 through 18 age group. And then the other pod is our adult students. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but Vermont uh, has no age limit on high school. And so uh, a student of any age who has not had a high, who has not um, received a high school diploma has a right to go to high school um, in the state of Vermont. And we have several, um, I'm not sure of the numbers off the top of my head, but in the past, it's been like 20 to 25 students who are adult aged um, in the last uh, several years. Typically per per school year. And those students, you know, can range in age from, you know, 19 to 32. And sometimes it's it's a little challenging having, you know, um, students who are, you know, adults who are working, might, you know, have um, family to support at home, might be parents themselves, having them in a class with a 15 year old, they just don't have um, the thing, you know, they're not in the same space, they don't have, you know, as much in common. So separating them by age and having the adult students together um, and the teenagers together has really, the the teachers have shown like, um, have really noticed, you know, better uh, social supports for them. The students really seem to like it as well because in a lot of situations, they, um, it's been older siblings in a class with younger siblings. And it's just been nice to kind of separate them out to give them their own space um, for learning. And so we found this model to be really positive. And it's been nice to, you know, learn a lot of things from COVID. Um, so the other thing that's changed is our high school mainstream ELL supports. So traditionally, we've offered ELL skills classes that are uh, they're really, at the beginning, they're ELA classes to support language development. And that corresponds to the WIDA levels, one through six, which are um, Vermont's part of the WIDA consortium, which is a um, language proficiency standards and assessments that about uh, 40 states are a part of now. Um, and it stands for uh, world-class instructional design and assessment. But so we, we've had our classes kind of correspond to those proficiency levels in the past. But during COVID, um, ELL and other teachers have been, you know, leading heterogeneous thematic pods. So you know, in order to support social distancing um, and the COVID safety regulations, we um, we decided to, you know, create these pods and have ELL teachers lead these pods while um, co-planning and collaborating with other teachers um, to bring in content um, and bring in, you know, uh, math and science and social studies, all those pieces. It's been really interesting, there are a lot of pros to this model. And you know, it it may, what we're learning during this time may affect how we're um, how we are providing ELL services in the future um, and how we are teaching in general at the high school. If we continue with this, one thing that we're really going to need is um, providing all teachers with more professional development on differentiating for ELLs. We we need to do more of that in general. But particularly with this model this year, because our ELL teachers are teaching their own pods and then also kind of providing consultancy support in order to service other ELLs and other pods. And we want to make sure that kind of all teachers are really able to provide quality differentiation for those students. Sorry. Just bumped something there. Hold on a second. I apologize, give me a second. All right. Okay. Um, so then I wanted to get into a little bit of the, you know, the diversity of language groups in the um, in the school district. So we have 17 different languages spoken across the school district. Um, and these are the uh, the numbers, as you can see, the um, our uh, Bhutanese Nepali population is um, is our largest population um, with our Somali Mymy speakers and uh, behind. And then uh, the newest growing population are our Swahili uh, French family, French speaking families who predominantly come from a, the Democratic Republic of the Congo. Um and then uh our Arabic speakers are Burmese uh and Karen speakers and Vietnamese speakers um are all at a similar number, around eighteen to twenty for those language groups. And then um some of the other languages included are Chinese, Korean, Japanese, Spanish. Um this kind of shows, you know, how uh how the languages of the school district have uh, the numbers have have changed over time. Um so as you can see, kind of the Arabic, um Burmese and Korean and Vietnamese populations have uh uh have remained, you know, pretty uh stationary at around twenty students for each of those language groups over the last few years. Um and then the um the largest growing population are Swahili uh and French uh speaking families. Um and that's expected to continue to grow with resettlement. Um and then you can see that our Nepali families remain high. Um and then our our Mimi and Somali speakers have um uh have declined a little bit in the last couple of years. Um and there could be a lot of reasons for that. There's been some like in-and-out migration, um also, you know, a result of the um uh the executive order that was passed early on in uh Trump's adminis- administration cut down on the um the number of refugees and immigrants allowed to resettle from Somalia, among other countries. Um so we do have uh, we are aware that there were some people, um family members of families in our community who were in the in the pipeline, it's called, um to come to the United States that were were stopped as a result of that. Um so we're still in refugee camps in Kenya. Um so these are the liaisons we have. And Liz, I know you kind of asked a question about this earlier. So we currently have four um full-time liaisons. Um our Somali Mimi speaking liaison, Delib, um our Nepali speaking liaison, Tool, who you all met earlier in the evening. A B R Al Zubedi is our Arabic speaking liaison. Uh Stevia Mukuzo is our Swahili, French, and Lingala speaking liaison. Um and then this year, we have also funded um an on-call interpreter who uh is supported by those SRF funds to support um the Swahili uh speaking community. Because um last spring, you know, we realized when when we went into remote learning, everyone's jobs, you know, kind of exploded for a while trying to, you know, support students and families moving to remote learning. And liaisons were working night and day to try and support families with that. Um and particularly, our our Congolese community is our newest resettled community, so they're really, you know, just developing language skills and just like learning how to use technology and and work with um, you know, complicated U- US bureaucratic systems like unemployment. Um and so we just found that uh the work was, you know, overwhelming for for our liaison. And so we were able to kind of call in um another, uh actually a former liaison of ours, Clayafas Mukiba, who some of you probably know, um to support her and her work. And he continues to do that this year um through the SRF funds. And then our Vietnamese-speaking liaison is a point seven. Um and our Burmese-speaking liaison, who supports our Burmese and Karen-speaking families, is point six-four. Um and so Liz, one of the questions you asked was um you kind of referenced that they weren't full-time. So they're part of the support staff contract, which means that they are uh full-time school-year employees, but they are not full-time year-round. Um and that's one of the things that uh, you know, we have discussed for a while. Um but in in general, that's a, it's it's challenging for any support staff to not be year-year-round employees. Um and it's something that the liaisons have talked a lot about. And um there's definitely a need for their work in the summer and over breaks and things like that. We actually, with the SRF funds, employed them over the summer this year. Um at least the the four full-time ones um we employed over the summer to provide supports for families and continue supporting remote learning during the summer school programs and things like that because the need was just so great this year. So this is, I I first shared this information with the board last year because um last school year was the first time that we had the um uh the help desk system for the liaisons. Um so this is um staff can submit requests um so that we can kind of track how much amazing work the liaisons are doing. And so um last year was the first year we started this, and it's helped us. So instead of emailing, calling, catching them in the hall, people submit a ticket. Um and then that helps keep them kind of keep their work organized, you know, so that they know all of the deadlines and everything that they have to do because it's in one system. And it also has kind of helped us track, you know, how much work they're doing. Um and it really shows, you know, how hard they're working. Um so this is the current data for this year. Um so you can see that like although um our Somali Mimi families not, students might not be the highest numbers um they're of students, uh they're currently the highest um number of requests for support. Um and of course, you have to take into consideration, this doesn't this data doesn't count all the parent phone calls that they get, you know, late at night on the weekends, um early in the morning, um and it doesn't count uh all the work they do to set up parent-teacher conferences. So there's there's a lot more work than just this, but this kind of gives you an idea. Um and you can see that uh the November numbers um are a little bit lower, and that's because, you know, of the the Thanksgiving holiday. Um they were kind of a a week short in November, so those numbers we noticed last year, too, were a little smaller. Um but then I wanted to share this with you because this is really, this was really striking to me when I looked at it. So these are the um uh the yearly totals as comparison um from uh last year to this year. So the blue is last school year and the red is this school year. And um what's noticeable here is that three months into this school year, so September, October, and November, we are already at over forty percent of the um ticket requests that we were at last year. Um and that kind of clearly shows that like COVID has added so much work to their position. Um and there's there's so much need right now. Um you can see even like, uh again, the Somali Mimi community, that right now, in the first three months, Delib's at half of the number of requests he got in the whole school year last year. Um so that's just, I wanted to share that data because it really highlights how essential these positions are and how much they are doing um to support our our communities and to really engage them.
Kristin, Kristin, excuse me for interrupting. It sounds like your microphone is a little bit fuzzy or giving some feedback. It just started at like maybe thirty seconds ago, but I don't know if there's a a setting, something that happened.
Is it better now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, yeah, just had to unplug it and plug it back in. Um so that was my last slide. Um and what I wanted to take a minute and talk about related to this data is that um uh, you know, Liz referenced the the Working Community Talent Grant um that the city of Winuski just received, uh which is really exciting. Um I think uh the the board members got the update about that. But what that really is all about is um trying to help the city of Winuski um better engage the different language communities um within our city. And they have really looked to the school and the liaison program as kind of a role model in order to do that. And so they received this planning grant last spring, right before we went into closure. Um and through that planning grant, they were able to, uh the city hosted um several meetings over the summer um with, using our liaisons as interpreters and community outreach um to engage different communities and talk about what they um, what they really wanted uh from the city and how the city can go about better engaging community um and and doing a better job servicing uh our linguistic minorities in the city. And so from there, um we developed kind of a a proposal to um the city is planning to hire an equity director to sort of um, you know, support this work around better engaging uh all families throughout the city. And then also, like, a big focus of it is to expand the um the liaison positions not just from schools, but more to community liaisons that are supporting, you know, all of uh the members of their linguistic communities within the city um through both the school uh and the city and and doing that kind of outreach. Um we're just, we just found out we received the grant a few weeks ago, and we are um uh so we're in the process now of starting with, well, what is that going to look like? What is that going to look like for our liaisons? Um and part of, you know, what the city wants to make sure they do is not just, and I I think I'm going to kind of take Alex's words, um because I believe he said this before, and I I think some of the other board members have said this as well. We don't want to just add more work and more hours to the liaisons. We want to really honor the work that they are doing and um and show appreciation for it. Um and I think the city really recognizes that a lot of what our liaisons are doing is city work essentially, is, you know, community engagement, um supporting families with understanding uh the the um housing voucher process with the Winuski Housing Authority, uh supporting uh families dealing with unemployment claims during COVID. You know, helping fill out food stamp applications, all of those things. Our liaisons don't um, it it their their day doesn't stop at the end of the school day. In order to support our students being able to reach those end goals that we have, um we really need to look at wellness of the families and of the students. Um because if we're not, you know, i- if they're not able to meet those basic needs, um they're not going to be ready to learn in our classrooms. So and our liaisons, like, I just can't say enough about them because the amount of work they do and the amount of commitment they have to their families and our community is outstanding. And so as part of this this grant, um the city kind of really wants to acknowledge and honor that, that a lot of the work they do goes beyond the school walls. Um and as we proceed with figuring this out, I want to be really thoughtful about how to do that. Um because as you can see from this data, they already have a lot of work to do. Tool couldn't interpret the rest of this meeting tonight because he had to get off to record um audio messages that we had to get out to our community. Um and I, one of my my worries that I I want to make sure that we address with the Working Community Talent Grant is that we we manage the liaison's capacity and don't overwhelm them any more than we already are. And so I really think, long-term, it wasn't listed in that uh long-term staffing slide. Um but realistically, we really, in order to adequately support our community and support our liaisons, we really need another FTE of our Somali Mimi for our Somali Mimi speaking community, our Nepali speak- uh speaking community, um and our Swahili, French, and Lingala speaking community in order to adequately support those communities and honor those individuals.
Great. So then I do want to ask a question. Why, knowing the need and the amount of work that they do, and I think everyone is, you know, a hundred percent behind that, why isn't it on the long-term slide, if this is important?
Um the long-term slide was created, like, that that initial plan was created, you know, five, six years ago. And the numbers, as you can see from the other data, have grown. And so it's kind of been hard to tell, you you know, that far back, it was sort of hard to tell what we would need now. You know, but we're we're seeing that, you know, um the numbers overall are increasing and and the need in general is increasing for families, and it's, you know, particularly due to COVID. But I I think that long-term, it's going to take us a while as a community, as a country, to come out of this. Um and some of those needs are going to remain even after, you know, we've been able to go back to normal. So, yeah, so that's why they weren't included in that slide.
Okay, well.
I think kind of to Tori's point, that should really be a living document, though.
Yeah.
You know, not not necessarily static, right?
Yeah, I guess I always assumed it was a living document, that it would be, you know, because I like the fact that it was updated uh in terms of what has been um addressed. Um but just to sort of keep our eye on the ball of some needs of our communities because I think that we're also seeing it in terms of um community voice, that this is another element that would help support families and students to to all be successful in the system, as the system being part of the community. We need to make sure that that is on the list so that we're weighing things and we're really looking at what's coming to us, what we feel like we need, and um what would be supportive.
Couple of questions, Kirsten. Um have you asked the liaisons what, like, the structure that they think would be most effective if if part of the and and then the second question is um related to the city and the city talking about an expanded role. Um just how how would that work? Like, how would we, would they still be housed within the school or would they be housed in the city? Or would it be like a a contract between the two? Or um like, if we were interested in looking at numbers um from staff to increase the capacity or what have you, of the liaisons um in this budget? Um like, what would that look like? Or is there not a need for this budget year, but you're talking, you're like looking ahead a little bit more?
So um that first part about, you know, working with the the liaisons and city to figure out kind of what these positions will look like. Um we, Nicole and I met with the liaisons in November, right after we found out that the grant was approved to start those conversations. Um and then we're going to um continue those conversations with the city because that's really the work now that we have the grant, is figuring out, how how do we make this work? Um because there are so so many questions to, you know, regarding what the actual work is, what the um, you know, uh what, uh how how we're supporting them with it, you know, um what what they're being paid, all of those pieces we kind of have to work through now that we have the grant in hand. Uh so that's kind of the plan moving forward, to really figure that that out with all of their input. And it's, you know, I think it's gonna look look different for different communities as well because um we're very aware that different communities kind of have different different needs, you know, and and how outreach is done and things like that. Um and then I know you had a couple other parts of your question. Um can you can you remind me again, sorry?
Um I think just like, how involved are the liaisons in the process of figuring out what the role looks like? Um, you know, they're they're doing the work now, so just making sure that their voices are at the the table.
Um, yeah, and that's that's like, now now that we have a grant, like, that's having them at the table. Um a couple of them were involved in the interviews um and preliminary meetings, and the, they were all part of uh those information gathering meetings this summer. Um but now working out the logistics of the position, that's really going to be in, not in their hands, but come, you know, completely with, you know, with uh their participation and their ideas.
Thanks. Really exciting and important.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, we've taken a lot of information. Thank you so much, Nicole, Robin, Kirsten. That was amazing. Y'all are on target.
Good to see you all.
Yeah, well, you just did a wonderful job, and thank you for um taking such good care of our district and your specific roles. Um that helps sort of the entire wellness that that comes out of this and being able to support all of our students and our communities together. It's it's big, it's really big. So um we'll meet again uh next week for our regular board meeting. Um hopefully, we can all digest this and come back with um some questions and some thoughts on some of the things that came up tonight. And with that, um unless there's anything else someone needs, feels like they need to say, um I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I I don't mean to take anybody's time anymore than needed, but just a clarification on the process because there were a bunch of like things that came up um that seems like we could make more progress on in next week's meeting if we got some numbers before next week. So specifically, like, the transportation question that was presented in public comment. If there's information on what it would cost to provide bus service for more than just the winter or on a um more for more than just the winter or on a more expanded schedule, then that would give us some more information and I think be responsive to the folks who made comments today. But there might have been other things like that that came up that, yeah.
What I'm hoping is that we'll get a list from Tool of the questions that were answered. I took some notes on the questions that were being answered so that Sean and I can meet to see what would, would be helpful to shape that conversation to address those questions at next week's meetings. We do have the preliminary numbers of what we do now. And so being able to add to that to see what it would, would cost year-round, back and forth. Any other specific numbers, anyone else thinks it would be helpful to, to know for next meeting? Or to, to figure out for next meeting?
I, I would like to, Robin, if we can look at budget versus actuals for the special ed over the last, I don't know, four years maybe, just for a running history.
I think we have that, don't we, Nicole?
I would think that that would not be. And Nicole, for the, for the, whoops, I'm losing power on something, I think. There was a slide deck, a slide in the deck last year that we did just before the budget that showed percent spending increases versus tax percent changes. If you can bring that, I think that's kind of a telling piece as well because I am gathering that almost 6% spending increase based on all the other stuff we've got is going to end up with the CLA, the reduction in equalized pupils, the yield going down. I think we're going to be in, in, in a very large budget increase this year if we keep it at the 5.71. I think that's too high.
I am happy to bring that historical data for you. And my plan was to try and use the information that the state put out and give you a better sense of what we're looking at in terms of tax rate impact. Even knowing we have the equalized pupils now, you know, there's still some unknowns. But just so you have some sense of the ballpark of where we think we might be.
Okay. Because those will all be estimates, but we can estimate anything and have a ballpark number.
Right. I mean, just, just so you have some sense.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the one other estimate that I think Robin provided was the two additional social workers contract with the Howard Center and what that would cost. So if that's, that could be kind of confirmed, that would be helpful.
I, I can do that easily. We have the invoice and the contract. I can let you know.
And then the anti-racism work, that'll be presented next week.
I think that pretty much covers everything, right?
Anything else, anyone?
Move to adjourn.
I think that's a, Alex.
That is a motion to.
That is, he has a motion to adjourn. He seconded. All those in favor to adjourn, board members, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, those that want to stay longer.
So, yeah, Tori, just, just a reminder on the Zoom piece, it's one at a time.
Oh, right.
It's supposed to be one at a time. It's a formality.
Being in person. Okay. So all those in favor for adjourning the meeting, I'm going to go around roll call and you're going to say aye if you agree that we should adjourn this meeting. Tula. Aye? I can say that as a aye?
I was muted. We're reading your lips.
Mike?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And aye, aye. All right. We're officially adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much for your work. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Tula.